Good evening. Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board, Wednesday, October 2nd, 7:00 PM. It's actually 7:05 in the town room of Town Hall. The first thing on our agenda, we have, well, first off, we have six of our seven members here tonight, and we will start with minutes, which I do believe we have minutes from August 27th. Are there, is there any discussion? Anyone have any issues with the, with the minutes of that night? All right. You just tell me if you do or you don't.
So, on page seven, about the findings of the board under 11.2403, it says, "The provision of adequate recreational facilities, open space, and amenities has been addressed because the proposed development is near the downtown area and important public spaces such as the town common and Sweets or Park are accessible to all." I don't remember ever talking about that, but I do remember we were talking about on the site on Main Street that there was space designated for tenants to have recreational, you know, area for them to sit and also barbecue and hang out, and that was going to be in the back of the property. And so, I thought that was a correction, that that's where the recreational space was. And I don't remember ever saying that, you know, public spaces like four blocks away is going to meet that, that thing. So, that was one thing. On the second one, the following one, I don't remember talking about taking down the historic garage. And so, I thought we'd somehow reflect.
Which number are you on that?
It's also on page seven, 11.2410. Unique or important natural historic or scenic features will be protected. And so, we did, the house itself isn't touched, the garage is going down. I don't remember us ever discussing, you know, taking down the garage, or I don't see how taking down the garage really protects it. So, I just wonder if the minutes could just reflect that. We didn't really talk about that.
I actually want to add to that. What I do remember us talking about is that they did get a 12-month delay, but that the Historic Commission had said something like, "But if you come back to us sooner and explain why and what you're doing, then we could release you from the 12-month commitment on the sooner side." And maybe, and we, so we were like, okay, we're good with that. We'll just, we talked about how it's in the Historic Commission's. They'll decide whether it goes to 12 or if it's less than that, and it will go through their process, but it didn't really affect. They'll have to come back to us, so maybe that has to be added. So, if they did have to keep the, the building, then they would have to alter maybe some of their parking and that kind of thing, and that would trigger them coming back to us. So, we did talk about that part.
So, that was talked about, and you also received, I believe, an email or a memo or something from Nate Malloy, who's a senior planner in our department with regard to the Historical Commission and its action on this. I hope I sent that to you. Do you, you don't remember receiving that?
I don't remember that, but you did read from it. That's how we knew. Actually, I think you did send it, because that's how I would have read it, that I knew that, that wording, that it said 12 months or less if you come back to us.
I think I did send it.
Email.
And so, I figured it was part of the documents that had supported the decision, and that's why I made reference to that in this 11.2410. In general, just let me say this, it's a good idea to put in backup information to the extent that you have it in these findings, because if something is challenged in the future, you don't want to just have the words from the bylaw. So, I must say, in some cases, I've taken poetic license to extract information that I know from the development application report or, you know, something that someone said and add it to 11.24, just for backup, to make sure that, you know, it's a robust finding. If you would, I guess there are two ways to handle this. In the past, some boards and committees, particularly the Zoning Board of Appeals, have been, shall I say generous, in their allowing staff to fill in the details. Perhaps the planning board is not interested in that, but if you're not interested in that, then you really need to be very specific when you're going through the 11.24 findings to come up with reasons why this is true or this is true. So, I hope that helps.
I appreciate the more rather than less. And then, like this time with the other, you gave us time to read the documents before, like this is minutes, but we're talking about the, the actual permit documentation you write. I appreciate you adding those extras that are sort of assumed but need to be there.
So, so they are minutes, and so I was, that's why I brought up the issue, because I don't remember talking about them. That actually leads into my next one, which is, on page eight, it was the conditions. And I remember you handed those out as draft conditions, and then we didn't talk about them, and we didn't read them. I remember thinking to myself, "Good heavens, I hope I don't have to read a seven-page or document." And so, is, I mean, that could be listed as a draft conditions that were presented, but not that we discussed them. I mean, don't the minutes need to reflect what happened at the meeting? Am I missing, missing something?
Well, it is part of the documentation that we've been given. These are minutes. It's not the actual permitted. So, this was part of what we were evaluating, like, it's hard to include, we, you know how much paper and emails we get, and I guess Chris is picking and choosing what aspects get included in the minutes, because if we included everything, it would be just thick.
Would you prefer that we leave those things out of the minutes unless they're specifically read? I don't remember whether we read that list or not. We didn't. So, in that case...
Can we just add a couple of words and just say, like, draft?
Draft.
Yeah. I like them. You good with that? Okay.
Draft conditions?
Yeah. Which it's sort of implied that they are, because it hasn't actually been finished. But I know what you were trying to do. You're trying to get these minutes to us, because we still have an active public hearing and process going, so.
Particular conditions were related to 462 Main Street, which you haven't yet signed. You've approved it, but you haven't yet signed it.
Exactly.
Yeah. The decisions were based on these minutes. So, I can change the decision based on what you say tonight to, you know, change the findings or whatever, whatever you like.
I'd be good with draft, and I know, I think Michael has a comment here.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to Janet's first point. It seems to me, and I didn't pick this up when I read it, that the town common and Sweets or Park, as far away as they are from the particular site we're talking about, do not really provide adequate recreational facilities. I mean, those are recreational facilities for anybody in town. They're no more appropriate to that particular location than they are to anybody else. And I don't think that should stand in lieu of recreational facilities on the site, because I think that's a bad precedent to set. If we can say, well, something six blocks away, or however far away that is, can stand as recreational facilities, then that puts it in an awkward position at some other point, I think.
Any other comments on the 2410 or how the conditions are written in the minutes?
So, I'm sorry, I come from a very picky profession of the law and where every sentence matters, and so I hope I can add something, not just picket things, but on page 11, under the waivers, I know that we talked about the waiver criteria, and I, you know, I felt like this project met the peak parking needs generated by onsite uses occur at different times, you know, and it was also providing two spaces per unit. I don't think that they met the compelling reasons of safety aesthetics or site design. I don't think they needed to, because they had, you know, alternate parking between their offices, people using their office and people living there. And so, I, that's super important to me, to be very clear, and so I think you could say waivers, like, we agreed to the waiver, but I don't think we, we really discussed that, you know, there was a compelling reason for site, whatever, design not to have those extra seven spaces for parking, so.
So, in other words, list under the waivers, that it was a waiver under section 7.9 or 7.90.
I think 7.910.
7.910.
That was true for me, and so I just, and that could, you know, and so, I don't really mind it that much, because I know we discussed both in the minutes, but if it's a condition or it's like what this, what our decision is based on, I think it is really important not to say, you know, compelling reasons of design are, we didn't want to, you know, it was just easier for our design.
So, I'd like to refer you to the decision, because in the decision, I actually added some language, because I knew Ms. McGowan was particularly concerned about section 7 point, I think it was 7.910 or something like that. So, do you have a copy of the decision there? Site plan review decision? I'm going to look at mine right now.
I think it's page nine.
So, under waivers, I would have just deleted the section 0.90, modification of parking requirements for reason of safety compelling, safety aesthetics or site design, and then it's supposed to be compelling reasons, which I'm not quite sure what those would be ever, but, and I'd be happy to rest the waiver on 7.91.
Okay, I can change that in both the decision and the minutes, if that's suitable to everybody.
So, what is the reason that we're giving for the, we're changing it to 7.91?
7.91, peak parking occurs at different times for different uses. So, the use of the office occurs at a different time than the use of the residences. Is that appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll make both of those match.
So, that, those documents will all be changed, and then we'll get them again to sign.
You can sign them tonight. You can sign the decision tonight, and I will change it tomorrow, because it's all on single pages. And if you sign the signature page, then I can swap out page 13 and swap out whatever...
What about page nine?
Nine, which also has the waivers on it and the 11.24 changes that Ms. McGowan recommended.
That's what I was...
Okay? So, change all of those if you will agree to sign this page tonight. I know Mr. Robulesky is very eager to have this decision.
Are there any other changes that either have to happen in the minutes or in the actual documents? Okay. So, do I hear a motion to approve the August 27th minutes?
As amended.
As amended, yes, of course.
Yeah, I move to approve the minutes as amended.
And, great. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye, or raise your hand, sorry. I know, eventually I'll get it. I think it was everyone unanimous. Okay, so we'll move to item two, public comment period. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on something that isn't on the agenda? And I see no one. So, item three, we have an appearance, it says. John Horneck, Chair of the Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, draft Amherst Housing Policy Presentation and Discussion. Welcome.
Thank you. I am John Horneck, Chair of the aforementioned Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. Did I miss a word? I'm not sure.
It's an acronym.
The acronym doesn't work very well either. Stan Rosenberg said you have to find a way of shortening that. Any suggestions are welcome. So, thank you for including me on your agenda this evening. I just have a little brief opening statement, and then I'm here to listen to and respond to questions or comments about the draft policy. We have a continuing affordable housing crisis in Amherst, and we have to commit to doing more. A few facts will highlight this, although there are a few more in the back of the housing policy draft. Amherst has no goals for the development of affordable housing. As someone once told me, "If you don't know where you are going, any road will get you there." Among the reasons why we have an affordable housing crisis is that the student population has taken over market rate rental property in town. Assume that's not a surprise to anybody here. Since the year 2000, the numbers of students seeking off-campus housing has grown each year. Actually, I have to 16,741 students, but with the new entering class, I expect it's over 17,000 now. If you are economically poorly off in Amherst, you often can't find rental housing even with a subsidy. In the last two calendar years, 2017 and 2018, the Amherst Housing Authority, which runs the HUD Mobile Voucher Program, issued a total of Section 8 vouchers, only 16 of which were leased up in Amherst, and 23 expired before they could lease up anywhere in the area, including Holyoke and Springfield. Rents continue to rise in Amherst, exceeding the resources of both low and even middle-income individuals and families. An estimated 57% of renter households are either cost burdened or severely cost burdened, which means that more than half of their income is allocated to the costs of housing. Not good. What can we do about it? The first step in creating is creating a commitment to set some goals. We can go from being a town which has no goals for the development of affordable housing to a town which has goals. The town policy drafted by the housing trust that we are asking you to review, first and foremost, will set goals, and further, to make a commitment to meet those goals. 250 new units of affordable housing over the next five years or so. It's a bit of a stretch, honestly, but we can do it if we set our hearts and minds to it. The housing trust is asking for reviews by town council, the Community Preservation Act Committee, and by you, the planning board. We seek not only your approval of the plan, but your consideration of what you can do to move us forward in reaching these goals. On behalf of the housing trust, I look forward to review and eventual approval of a real town housing policy. Please join us in this enterprise and also in our Fall Housing Forum, which will be on the evening of Monday, November 4th. More detail to follow. Thank you again.
Thank you. Are you up for taking questions from the board?
Yes, that's what I anticipated.
Great.
I don't want to read the document or go over it in detail, except to the extent that you have questions or comments that you want to share.
Great. I see Chris's hand is up.
I had a couple of comments and questions. One, one comment I had was on page one, under funding priorities. The first, no, the second sentence states that the master plan, the housing production plan, and the comprehensive housing market study were adopted by the select board, and I believe that they were actually adopted by the planning board and not the select board, and that's been a topic of conversation around town. So, I wondered if you could make that correction, because I know they were adopted by the planning board. I don't believe they were adopted by the select board.
Okay. I think that you're correct, Chris Dean, that some were adopted by the planning board, maybe all. I thought the select board definitely adopted the housing production plan. I think that was required by the Department of Housing and Community Development. I would assume they would have adopted the master plan, but, no? Okay.
Nobody but the planning board adopted the master plan, and that's been a bone of contention among people for years.
I stand corrected. Thank you.
May I ask another question? I wondered what your schedule is for housing, having this policy adopted, because if you are going to speak with these other groups, the municipal housing trust, town council, community preservation act committee, you will presumably be making changes to this, and I wondered if you would plan on coming back to the planning board with a final document, or are you expecting to get all your comments tonight and then start putting a final document together for the town council?
Well, I'm going to be a little vague about what exactly the timetable is for precisely the reason that you spoke. That is, that I am looking for comments. I do anticipate coming back at least once more, maybe multiple times if that becomes necessary. As you all know, I met with the Community Resource Committee of Town Council, I guess it was last week, and after the meeting, I made notes, because I realized, gee, I'm going to need those notes in order to think about changes. And so, that's what I anticipate with each of these groups. The last one to be scheduled is the Finance Committee, which is the 23rd of this month. So, as of then, I'll have met with each committee individually, gotten their feedback, and then the housing trust will look at that and say, "Okay, what changes should we make in this document in order to make it acceptable to all of the groups that we want to have on the same page with respect to this town policy?" So, that could easily go into December. Hopefully, it won't go beyond that.
So, when would it be helpful to have comments from the planning board?
Well, it certainly would be helpful to have comments this evening, but if not this evening, then, you know, sometime in the next couple of weeks. And given the nature of the open meeting law, while people could communicate them individually to me, I think there's value in having a group discussion, because people are stimulated by hearing the comments of others to ask questions or make comments that they might not if they just did it on their own.
Thank you. I don't think we'll be ready to generate all of our comments tonight, but we're glad you're here, and we'll ask questions. I also remember, because I get your emails, there was something about, there's a forum that's going to be with the planning board involved in the future. Like, I know you guys are about, like, evolving your plan and what's going to happen, but is there some...
There is, I mentioned the housing forum on November 4th.
Yeah.
To which you all are certainly invited. There is no formal role for the planning board, although I did send a note to Janet, inviting her to participate in one of the breakout groups that has to do with the formation of the policy, because when I spoke before the Community Resource Committee, she had a number of suggestions that are not in the policy, that are ways to maybe better manage our existing housing stock, which would create more housing in town beyond building new housing.
So, thank you for, so I just saw planning board under that, that item. So, it would be helpful, I think, if any of the members who are able to, to attend that event, and then if it's possible, if we could wait until our next planning board meeting after that to finalize what comments we would want to send back to you all for that document.
Sure. We know we need to be patient with this, so that will be fine.
With that, I want to open it up to the board for any questions that they have about any of your good works. I think I saw Janet's hand.
So, I want to support your goals and your policy. I love the idea of a specific goal, a commitment to meeting it and a way of tracking it, and so that just seems a path to success. And I began to wonder, like, strategies for implementation, which we've talked about a little bit. I think that one of a key strategy that the planning board has a really strong role is to recommend an inclusionary zoning article to the town council that actually applies to everything. Any special permit, permit for site plan review, any building permit, you know, and in the housing market study and the housing production plan, the recommendation was to do a very simple, simplify the inclusionary zoning bylaw in what is a very dense and complicated zoning bylaw and apply it across the board. And you could actually apply it to subdivisions, too. They recommended a 15% affordable house, you know, inclusionary zoning requirement, not a 10%, which is what part of our bylaw aims for, and it's a way of keeping, it's just going to generate units, and we've lost a lot of opportunities for that. And that housing market, Amherst Housing Market Study recommends the 15%. The Housing Production Plan recommends that. The previous, the planning board has adopted both as part of the master plan. So, I think that's a great strategy, and it's a way of sharing costs and not always having the town. Taxpayers pay for every unit of housing. I also think, you know, maybe two and three family houses that are on or occupied, changing our bylaw that has that, maybe giving a property tax rate to people who have those kind of houses, and maybe a bigger break if they agree to have some of those units to be affordable. The supplemental building bylaw is a great way. We just need to get more people in affordable houses in Amherst. It's not always reading, meeting, meeting that requirement, and there's not a huge appetite for developing open lands or undeveloped lands. We've been talking a little bit about Nestlely, which is like a matching service between seniors and students, and the service itself kind of vets people ahead of time and does background checks and things like that, and helps set that up and with leases. UMass might be a good person to do that. Other, other universities have that service. I think, I think the town has to sit down and talk with UMass about adding, you know, three, 5,000 students over five years and constantly putting pressure on our housing stock. And so, can UMass agree to just build dorms to house its new students? And it's just, it's, it's a constant pressure, and it's taking, it's, puts a lot of stress on the town and people looking for places to stay. And then I think also the, the housing, Amherst Housing Market Study really said we need to focus on building non-student apartments and condos for low and middle-income people. And I, in my, just reading the paper, walking around town experience, is everything we're building is really expensive apartments or really large, you know, six or $700,000 houses or, you know, even the beautiful cluster development going up by Atkins, those are like in the $500,000 range. And so, we need to figure out ways that we can reach a different part of the market so people can afford to live here. So, those are some strategies for how to get there, and I think the planning board has a big role in that.
In general, I agree with what you've said. I think when the housing trust pulled this document together, it didn't want to preempt the planning board and say, "Here's what the planning board should do in order to help us reach this goal." So, I think the suggestions that you've made is something your colleagues should take up, and if you all think that that should become a part of this document, then I think we should all seriously consider making those additions.
I had a couple of more small comments, if you don't mind. On page five, policy justification, on the section of background, just to note that there's the number of 28 units of affordable housing that's being provided at North Square. That's actually 26 units. It's in the second sentence, I think, instead of 28, that should be 26. But I also think you might want to mention that we are currently looking at getting 11 more units at Aspen Heights, down on North Hampton Road, and we just recently got four units of affordable housing on University Drive as a result of a project that Barry Roberts just completed. So, you know, we, we know what our deficits are, but I think we should celebrate the things that we are accomplishing. So, those are some of those things. And I had one other comment, which was on page seven. In the excerpt from the housing market study, there's an indication that UMass is, you know, accepting more students and not providing housing for... know, accepting more students and not providing housing for them and it's taken a while, but UMass is finally getting around to putting out an RFP for, I believe it's 1,000 beds that are going to be along Massachusetts Avenue and so I think we should acknowledge that as an effort of UMass to house more of their students and we're hoping that that project, you know, turns out as well as, as well as it can, but that should be added maybe as a little, I don't know, footnote or something to, to this complimentary footnote, that's a good way to put it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Horneck while we have him? Michael?
Yeah, I have a comment. Your sense of, first of all, I find the proposal very convincing and important and I, speaking for myself only, I feel that the organization that you represent probably knows more about the needs of affordable housing than I do and I, for one, would welcome your specific recommendations as to what the Planning Board might accomplish, might do in order to accomplish the goals that, that you suggest and outline and with which I agree. And I think now is not the time for reticence on your part. I'd like to see what you, hear what you have to say specifically and maybe we can jumpstart the process that way.
Okay, thank you, Michael. I am not an expert on zoning, for better or worse. On the other hand, I have been reading, certainly over the past several months, a lot that's in the national news or national comments about the impact of zoning on affordability. And I should say that the focus of this policy is on affordable housing and this might sound like it's the same thing, but actually, some of the questions that I get and the reading that I've done suggests we also need to look at housing affordability. What's the difference? Well, affordable housing really has to do with, in my mind anyway, housing that is subsidized, housing that is primarily for individuals at 80% AMI or below, housing that's protected either for at least 30 years or often in perpetuity, that must be available to persons who are low or very low income. Affordable housing is a broader issue under which that fits and it has to do with whether an average person or say a town employee or an employee of a local business can afford to live in Amherst. And people ask me, well, why isn't the policy directed toward those people and assuring that they'll be able to either rent or buy in Amherst? And the answer is honestly, it's a much larger issue and I'm not quite sure how to address it, but it gets to the issue that you're talking about. Zoning appears to be a major obstacle everywhere to the development of multifamily or multi-unit housing. In Amherst, we have generally single-family housing, that's not an accident, that is the way most of the town is zoned, as I'm sure all of you know. Not only is it zoned to be single-family, but the size of the lots have to be a certain size and so as a consequence, we've committed most of the property in the town to single-family zoning, which works out great for me. I have a nice house that's on a lot that fits in with our zoning regulations, but it doesn't work for everybody. And if we're going to change our part of the world so that it is accessible to not only people who are low or very low income, but even people who are at middle income, people who work for the university as either faculty or, or staff, people who work for local businesses, people who work for Amherst College or Hampshire College, we need to make some changes. And people may have seen this as a headline, I believe the city of Minneapolis has eliminated single-family or zoning from its books. I don't know exactly what the impact of that would be in Amherst and I don't know whether it's advisable, but it may be something to be explored. I also read recently that the city of Philadelphia banned student housing in an area immediately around Temple University. Temple University is a public college or a public university and it really doesn't have much of a campus residential environment, so developers were appropriately building housing and that represented gentrification and the city of Philadelphia was driving out people who were lower income. And honestly, I think we have a similar phenomenon in Amherst. So again, I don't know whether that's a good idea, I don't know where I'd put a zone like that in Amherst, but I think there are a lot of ideas out there and I'm not reticent to make suggestions, but I certainly, as I said, don't feel like I know enough about zoning or know about, enough about how I would make work in Amherst to feel like I can say, well, here are the five things I think the Planning Board should do. I, I don't know what those five things are, quite honestly, although, again, Janet's suggestion of requiring inclusionary zoning is certainly something to strongly consider. So I don't, did I kind of answer your question, Michael?
Any other questions? Janet?
I have a question about the, I had a question about the statistics as I was reading them and I have no way of, so I was wondering that about the statistic that over half the families in Amherst are paying 50% or more of their income and I wondered how the report or any of our reports deal with students. So if you looked at my kids' income when they're as college students, they're spending probably 100% of their income on paying for their dorms or to the extent that they do pay, actually they're paying with loans, but they work in the summer and so I wondered, like, are students in that number in some way? And not to say that they don't have to pay rent, but they're sort of a different, you know, kettle of fish than a family or an individual working nine to five.
I don't believe they are, but I'm not absolutely certain. The origin of the data for that statistics and other statistics is, I believe, something called the American Community Survey. All of us have heard about the Decennial Census, which properly called Decennial because it comes around every 10 years. The problem is if we, we're sitting here in 2019 and the last Decennial Census was in the year 2010, what do we know? And obviously, it's hard to feel confident about data that's 10 years old. So, the same organization that does the annual census, the, sorry, Decennial Census does annually something called the American Community Survey. It is a sample survey as opposed to 100% survey and they sample households throughout the United States in each community. Obviously, it's a much smaller sample. On the other hand, since it's happening every year, people fairly, feel fairly confident that if you summarize the data for any five-year period, as long as you have a reasonable-sized community, you can have some confidence in the data. So that's the source of the data and since it's a household survey, I don't think it includes, for example, students at the university. I'm not sure whether, for example, they include the households on my street, roughly a third of which are student-occupied rentals. I, I'm sure it would be more difficult for them to do that successfully.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Horneck? Maria?
I'll delve into your document more closely and maybe I'll send my comments directly to you and we can bundle them together and I was hoping we could also see the comments of the other groups you would be speaking with because I, I don't know the economics of all this and I don't want this to also prevent things from happening, so I want to find a balance of like affordability and developers being able to reach that level. So I just, I don't have, you know, the, the experience of knowing where that balance is, so I really look forward to seeing that kind of number. And just as a side, I'm, I'm sorry if this is a redundant question, are you working with the 40R study that's happening with the consultants that are looking at the BL area? What is your perspective on that right now?
Okay. To answer your first question, as I believe you all know, I did take notes on the Community Resource Committee meeting. I'm not sure that they were perfect because they were kind of sketchy and then I did it after the fact, but nonetheless, I have them and my intention is to share them with everybody and as I wait further feedback from that committee and other committees. So, yeah, I think it makes sense for me to do my best to gather comments and questions from everyone and to share them broadly. On the second question, yes, I am part of the 40R study, actually that originated with the Housing Trust. Myself and Rita Farrell, who's a consultant to the Housing Trust, along with Nate Malloy, wrote a grant application to Mass Housing Finance. They funded the study, which means that they actually chose the consultant, Karen Sonnaborg, to undertake it and since it got underway, Chris has included me in meetings and emails with the 40R consultants. Is there, so?
Curious, what do you think of their, the place they're studying, the, the site they sort of chose to start with?
Well, they ended up deciding to focus on downtown and I was part of that decision. It wasn't an obvious decision, you know, you could make a case for North Village or for Pomeroy Village or even East Amherst, but in the end, we decided that the greatest opportunity was probably downtown, but it was a close call. But on the other hand, you had to start somewhere and, you know, there are a number of different reasons for it, I, I don't need to go into it, I don't think. But the good news is, I guess, if we're successful in getting 40R approval downtown, then the next step is to move on to another area of town, not necessarily with consultants, but with staff and the Planning Board. And to me, it was obviously important because the 40R requirements include, I think it's 20% of the development has to be affordable housing because there are state benefits that come to the town when you adopt a 40R district and development actually occurs.
When is that next, that third meeting for the 40R, either you or Chris?
October 24th, Chris?
We should try to go, any of us that can. When is it again?
October 24th and is it the Woodbury Room? Yeah, yeah.
October 24th, Woodbury Room. All right, so hopefully some of us can attend that and I think that will be helpful. So, any other questions? Thank you for coming.
Okay.
I just want to say that, like, we have some suggestions from Janet and I assume as we digest this, like Maria was saying, we could compile it and maybe set a future meeting that we can start to sort of discuss that, I don't know, maybe, maybe the next one after their November 4th meeting?
So your meeting on the, at 14 days, no, wait a minute, no, it's November 20th, your meeting on November 20th. So you could have it on your agenda for November 20th because then you would have had an opportunity to go to the 40R meeting on October 24th and the Housing Trust would have had an opportunity to hold their Housing Forum on November 4th and you could attend that as well. So maybe by November 20th, you'll have more solidified ideas about the housing policy that's being proposed?
Good with that, I think everyone else is, and if we could set an earlier date for when individual members can send their comments into you to, that can be added to a list for discussion.
Maybe we could say a week before the November 20th meeting, so that would be November 13th or 14th?
Okay.
I will say honestly, I wouldn't expect a great deal to come out of the Housing Forum. We're talking about a 45-minute breakout group that will talk about what the issues are and ways in which this proposed policy could be strengthened. That obviously can include the kinds of suggestions that have been made here this evening, but if you're going to rely entirely on that, I think that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't make sense. I think that, you know, the work that each of you does individually, what you know, is more likely to be important in deciding what you as a group believe is what the Planning Board should focus on.
I, I think it's more than just the 4th that there is that meeting, but we also have the October 24th.
Right.
On the 40R and we've been talking to Chris about, you know, all, learning more about 40R and, and of course, digesting this housing stuff. Janet?
So I don't know what the timing would be, but I wonder if we can have a meeting focusing on the Housing Production Plan and the Amherst Market Study and their strategies and sort of thinking, these, these plans are quite old and kind of saying like, oh, what was implemented, what wasn't, you know, what are things we could focus on? And we are a planning board, not just a zoning board and so we could look at some strategies that don't involve a zoning change and maybe kind of keep it going and so I, I don't know if we should do that before or after, but it seems like it might be good just to talk about housing and we have a lot of good ideas and studies and, you know, just kind of juice it up a little.
So, you know, we get really booked up with a lot of stuff and there's a lot to digest, maybe you or we can make a specific request to staff for them to compile some information from that report or something, like I wouldn't want to, us try to drag through it at a meeting, so if you want to reword your request to Chris for what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think that's been done before. That is, people have pulled out recommendations from the Housing Market Study and the Housing Production Plan that came from consultants that would include zoning or other kinds of changes to expand affordable housing.
And, you know, they both are really long and I've slogged through one and part of the other, so I could see why a summary of their strategies would be good, not, you know, not just in terms of affordability, but an overview would be great. But definitely the affordable housing piece is critical to me.
Oh, I was just wondering, is, does a town have a website set up with repository for, you know, the key documents and so we can delve into it a little bit more and just get that additional comfort level with the, all the resources being used and there's so many and some sound like they may be outdated and things are changing, I know, pretty quick.
So both of those documents, the Housing Market Study and the Housing Production Plan are both on the Housing Trust website, so it's the Amherst Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, although the word municipal, I think, is left out of their wording on the town website, but both of those documents are available there. There is, there is talk about updating the Housing Production Plan and we have debated about that, either doing it in-house or asking for some capital funds to do it with a consultant, but we're also talking about potentially waiting until the new census comes out because then we'd have fresh information. So there's internal discussion about exactly when that should be updated.
Okay, is that, is that enough, Janet? Or, okay. Any other questions? Michael?
Comment? It, it seems to me to make good sense to wait for the census results before we try to assemble a larger and better data. to wait for the census results before we try to assemble a larger and better database. However, in the meantime, it seems to me that, as Mr. Horne suggests, zoning is one of the major areas that impact this issue. And zoning is one of the things that we have responsibility to recommend, at least. And I'm wondering whether it would be a good idea for us to, I don't know how busy the zoning subcommittee is, to charge the zoning subcommittee with investigating some of these ideas and bringing back to us some suggestions about what kind of zoning changes we might make, sorry, we might suggest to the council that would move forward this, solving this need. Are you guys too busy to do that? Or is that something that's reasonable to ask? Seems reasonable to me, not being on it.
We're going to have an update on the zoning subcommittee. Maybe we can table that to that because there, there's a lot going on with the zoning subcommittee and we'll add that to the mix. One other thing I wanted to add, another meeting, I don't know where else to put this in our agenda. But it looks like there's going to be a meeting, Chris, maybe you can highlight on this, on October 28th on the master plan. I believe you're going to be making a presentation. And it is going to be suggested that, again, planning board members try to come to this. And I'm trying not to mix everything, but yet it's all related. This is another thing that might have to go to zoning subcommittee and also ties into everything. So the master plan and where that's going and the housing. So, and I have, I have 5:30 PM, maybe you can clarify. So what it said is 5:30 an info session and then at 6:30 a public forum. So I assume planning board would come at 5:30 and it probably would go to at least 7:30?
I believe this is a town council meeting that is required by the charter. So, and I think that Ms. Gray-Mullen's explanation of the timing is correct. 5:30 for an info meeting and 6:30 for a public forum.
So it sounds like we have a lot of meetings and a lot to think about. Anything else? And is that okay? Good, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're running a little behind. So, I'm going to read the preamble for item number four, "Public Hearing, Site Plan Review and Special Permit." It said 7:10, but it's, it'll say 8 o'clock or- So, Amir Miki, South-
I need to read the preamble again because you've opened the public hearing, but you can read the description of the-
Just the announcement? Can I jump to that?
Yes, right.
And then should I read the paragraph? Okay. All right. So this is a public hearing being continued from July 4th, 2019, August 27th, 2019, and September 18th from 2019. SPR 2019-07 and SPP 2019-04, Amir Miki, Southeast Street Court Housing, 133 and 143 Southeast Street. Joint Public Hearing to Request Site Plan Review Approval to Construct a New Three-Story Mixed Use Building with 62 Apartments, 1,358 Square Feet of Retail Space and Associated Site Improvements and Work in the Town Right-of-Way Under Section 3.325 of the Zoning Bylaw and Request a Special Permit to Modify the Front and Side Setback Requirements Under Footnote A of Table 3, Section 6 of the Zoning Bylaw, B-VC Zoning District, MAP 15C, Parcels 3 and 4. So if you all want to come forward, I believe we're going to have a presentation about the updates that have happened. And a side question. At the last meeting, you had a poster board with elevations. We have a member here on the board who wasn't here at the last meeting and he would like to see that, if you have it, if you could put it up on the ESO or-
I have those same elevations on the-
You have it on the flash, great.
Flash drive, so.
Welcome. If you could all just announce your names and who you are for people who are watching for the first time.
I'm Michael Liu with the Berkshire Design Group, Landscape Architects and Civil Engineers.
Excuse me, would you speak into your microphone and make sure that the light is on?
Do you want me to repeat? Michael Liu, Berkshire Design Group, Landscape Architects and Civil Engineers for the project.
I'm Amir Miki. I'm the owner of the 133, 143, Southeast Street.
Roy Brown, Architect, Wilbraham, Mass.
Yeah, we have a lot of slides to go through. There's some new material. And I just want to say that the building design is, or has been revised so that it's now 61 units and the 1,200 square feet of retail. One of the residential unit spaces was changed to be the mechanical room and indoor bicycle storage. So we'll see that on the revised floor plan. Nothing on the exterior facade of the building didn't change. So the elevations that we'll flip through are the same ones that were presented last time we were here. So, just going over kind of quickly, this is a color plan rendering of the revised site design. You will see that the parking lot has changed slightly. Oops, I'm not getting, Mike, is it there? There it is. So, we have also revised parking numbers. Previously, there was 68 total parking spaces. In this layout, there's 67 parking spaces. And Mr. Miki can explain some of the details of the change in some of the residential lease agreements, which we hope will satisfy, or partially satisfy, some of the need or for the reduction in parking usage on the site. So there's 67 parking spaces here. The circulation system is a two-way in-and-out driveway. Once you get into the site here, the circulation is, again, counterclockwise, going this way out, in and out. The space that was eliminated was essentially here at the corner. And this allowed for the plaza area to extend out to the curb line where this space is essentially to be used for a pickup zone, if you will. For, you know, any type of shared ride, public transportation, taxi, Uber, what have you, is a pickup zone. Although we, you know, we probably know that some people will be picked up outside on the, on the street. But this allows for an interior pickup zone, which could be especially handy or useful for, you know, those people with, that might have some physical disabilities. The building has shifted slightly. It's, we still have a six-foot setback on the north side here. But the six-foot setback on the east side was changed to three feet. You know, it didn't really bias anything, any, you know, ability to get extra parking. But we wanted to shift the building a little bit. And essentially, the whole parking lot, you know, moved with the building. So we have a little bit more green space on the site. But we're still at the maximum 70% coverage for the proposed conditions on the site. In the front area, we changed the orientation or location of this walk so that it comes directly across from where the proposed crosswalk is planned. So that once somebody crosses the street, there's the option or, you know, to travel to the northwest entry into the building here or continue, you know, across this plaza area and then to the two retail spaces, which are in the lower front of the building here. The architect prepared these wonderful renderings. Although I just caution you, the parking lot and street work and sidewalk, et cetera, is based on a really old conceptual plan. But you can get an idea of the mass of the building and, you know, what it, how it might fit into the site relative to some of the other buildings. You see, to the north is this way, this is the Florence Bank and Commercial Building. We see a piece of the Reliance Auto Shop here, Auto Express, I'm sorry. And then these are residential buildings across the street. And with the, I'm going to say vast amount of conservation land owned by Amherst College to the, to the west and south of the site. This next 3D rendering, I think you get a better sense of what the building, you know, looks like. There's, there's these jogs that go in and out, going from the second floor and third floor. I don't know if those were readily apparent in, you know, the flatter elevations that we saw previously. But here you see, you know, the three-story building sitting pretty much on the site. I don't know if they, did you get the building at the exact setback to the property line? So this is, yeah, this is in, you know, approximately how much green space you'd see in front of the building with the sidewalk at the street and then the walkway in front of the building. I don't know why this truck is there. I wish you could have-
Because it was in the picture.
I know. Wish you could have photoshopped that one out, but. But anyway, you get a sense of the character of the building on the site. And again, we saw this last week. It was a cross-section showing kind of like the relative height in mass of the street scape relative to the Florence Bank and Commercial Building to the north. And then these are the elevations that we saw last week. So this is the, again, the elevation facing the street with the northwest entry door here and then the two retail spaces on the south end of the building. The reverse or backside. And then these are the other elevations. Let's see, this one is the, hold on a sec. Did I get that right? This is the elevation if you're standing in the parking lot looking north. And then this is if you're standing, if you're in the parking lot looking eastward. With, so the top elevation would have Southeast Street on the other side of the building. We showed this last week. It was just the site distances, which are basically unobstructed in both directions at the location of the proposed curb cut or entry drive. Just a reminder about, you know, kind of like these big buildings, there was kind of the question of, you know, what this would look like in, in the neighborhood. And, you know, we have a similar situation uptown where we've got, you know, actually a five-story building sitting, you know, amongst the, basically one-story commercial uses. Chris sent this image to everybody earlier today, was it? But I think it basically, I don't, I'm not really sure. The question came up of what is the, you know, what defines or what is, what are the limits of the East Amherst Village Center? And I don't know if there was a formal kind of edge, but I'll let Chris comment on that.
So the limits of the East Amherst Village Center haven't really been defined because we haven't done a planning effort on East Amherst yet. This drawing shows the outlines of the commercial zone, which is in red. The residential village center, which is in a kind of beige color. The business village center, which is in cross-hatched, source draped. And then going up to the north to encompass that office building. But if you were really going to look at the village center, you would probably want to include the Jewish Community Center, which is a very important structure and community center there, as well as Amherst Glass and probably a few more things like Aspen Chase Apartments and-
Where's Aspen Chase? Is that on?
I think it's the one that's-
This right here?
I believe that's Aspen Chase. So, so this isn't really as extensive as it should be, but it's based on zoning. So when we do do a study of this village center, we'll probably want to include all of those things. But I think one of the reasons that one of the planning board members asked me to come up with this plan was to get a sense of what is the context for this new building? And you're being asked to look at setbacks and you're being asked to look at height and massing, et cetera. So one of the buildings that is in this village center, if you go along with this outline, is Fort River School. And another building is the three-story building that's right behind Spirit House, which you don't even really see from the road. But it's a mixed-use building that's tucked back in there. And it is three stories tall. It's got retail on the bottom floor and two floors of residential above it. So just to give yourselves some context for what might be considered to be included in the village center and how you can compare this proposed building with other buildings in the neighborhood.
And then, I mean, I'd also like to point out that, you know, this is Colonial Village. There's a vast, or, you know, a large population there. I think they're all two-story apartments. But, you know, you've got, you know, rental situation, right? Almost basically across the street. It's within walking distance of, you know, the main intersection here, Route 9 and Southeast Street. So, you know, I mean, I always kind of thought of that as being kind of like a big population center within this kind of East Amherst area. Site plans, we'll flip through these, but let me get to, I don't, if you wanted to talk or comment about any of the details or anything, I, you know, I guess we can come back to that. I was going to flip to the, to the lighting, or lighting plan and then the architectural first floor plan. So this is the revised lighting plan. I think you've got it in your packet from a couple of days ago. There was also some lighting cut sheets that were included, so you can see. But basically, this is the, you know, the light and you have a detailed version of it in your packet. This is the same light that was used at the Triangle Street, you know, the new roundabout. So we're trying to, you know, Mr. Miki has agreed to kind of like use this town standard because there's proposed lighting within the right-of-way of Southeast Street. So that would, you know, be kind of like turned over to the town, as it were. And so that, you know, we're kind of, we're copying that style and using it, you know, within the site as well. But the lighting plan includes four pole fixtures on Southeast Street, start from the south. This fixture, which was previously over here, was moved to the south side of the entry drive to, you know, really light up the entry. There is, the next fixture is right here. And then there's one here at the bus stop area. And then one here as you go north, which is, you know, off-site, but continues that to provide lighting because of, you know, there's obviously a need to light that new sidewalk that would, you know, start from here and connect all the way over to the north side of the, this curb cut to the commercial property. Within the site, there's fa- is it six, one, two? Yes, six light fixtures. There's one to the south of the parking lot here, one to the north right here, one to the east here, one on the west side, one on the south and in the island, and one on the north in this island. And this provides lighting for the parking areas. Additionally, we had the wall packs that were on the building. And, you know, they're approximately where these symbols are, or the notations are noted here. SW1, SW2 at the doorways. There's another SW1 here at this doorway. And then two other SW1 wall packs that would be on the facade that'll direct light downwards on the walkway as you, you know, along the building. And then on this side, there's just two wall packs at the, one at the main entry to the building and then one here at this other egress. While I'm on this plan, I'll point out the little plaza area changed so that it's a little bit more inviting to, so people can, you know, enter the doorway and not have to kind of navigate through cars, as it were. to kinda navigate through cars, as it were. But also along this side, where there was a residential unit is now, you know, there's two doors. There's a mechanical room here and there's a door on the outside which will be locked. There's another indoor space for bike parking here with a, with an access door. And I think I'll flip to the architectural floor plan. There we go. Okay. So this is slightly different orientation, but this is the parking lot side. So you'll see this is the main entry door on the backside and then the mechanical room area and then the bike parking. Now, Amir just told me that we've, they've revised this to, because right here, there's only 18, I think, bike racks, but Amir tells me that the plan's been revised to have 20 total. And that number matches the parking management plan that Amir submitted, which I think you also have a copy of and we can go over that next if you'd like. Or I think I'm finished with the slides for now, so if you wanna have any comments or questions or would you like to talk about the parking management plan? I don't know if you've had, hopefully you've had time to kinda, you know, go through it.
So if that's sort of the end of the presentation, I can open it up to questions from the board.
Do you wanna talk about this at all?
Unless, yeah, do you have more information you wanna present? Or do you wanna explain your parking management?
Sure. The parking management plan was basically a suggestion that, you know, the, we got from you.
Could you speak up just a little?
Sure.
Speak into the mic. Thank you.
We reduced, we dedicated one unit for the mechanical room and also provide the indoor bike storage and which also is providing lobby on the other side, so for the people. So we have two lobby on this side, on the street side and the parking side. And we also added one parking space that, you know, was suggested for the Uber that, you know, people wanna, you know, it would, and we added that and also we created that plaza with that idea that, you know, for the people coming in and out, you know, bring, checking in and checking out their stuff so that, you know, there will be plenty of space for them. Also, we, as I said, the, that, in the storage room now provides, provides 20 bike rack. So we also is, we're talking to Zipcar to see if, you know, they would be willing to have one Zipcar there to, you know, for, to help the, assist the residents there. And by now that we have the 10 visitor parking space. And what we have done is that we decided to have 10 units and we had the appendix to the lease that we sent it to you. I don't know if you got it on time. Yeah. That basically 10 units don't have the privilege of the parking. Instead, they would have the reserved parking, the bike rack and they would not be given the parking decal. And the parking is, would be reinforced and it would be a discount for those units, for those 10 units that they decide, you know, that they wouldn't have, they wanna take advantage of not having the parking space, it would be discounted rate. How much, I really don't know at this point. And also, it's already, you know, there is, was a bus stop that is already constructed on the, I believe, westbound?
Excuse me, what?
West, on the eastbound. It's already donated the land, you know, was, I donated the land when we were doing the work on the Southeast Street. And it's already there and we are also gonna do the, another bus stop on the other side where the right-of-way is. And it is, we would be, I would be basically taking care of all the expenses for, you know, that area, including the bus stop. And we also, as Chris, somebody suggested, it was you, I believe, that you wanted six feet walk sidewalk. We managed to also have a six-foot sidewalk. We, we did that. And we were checking on the other places in Amherst and other apartment complexes. They also have that situation that they allow one parking, they have designated one parking space for, per apartment. I paid the vendor myself to check on that. And it is the Presidential and also Chris view that they have that, you know, that for each apartment, they have one decal that they would do. You can ask the office, which I did. And also, based on the study that was done or observation that was done in Amherst in the Spruce Ridge on High Street, only 23 out of 34 parking space were regularly used. So that was, you know, kind of encouraging. And basically, the idea of Southeast, Southeast Commons is to, I, I know it is tight, but at the same time, we are encouraging people to basically have used bike. And if there are people who really have cars and they cannot, you know, we cannot accommodate them, then obviously Southeast Commons is not gonna be for them. And that was it, I believe.
Chris?
I just had a question about the parking management plan because I noticed that it says that the parking lot will accommodate 68 vehicles. So I wondered if either Mr. McChie or Mr. Liu would confirm whether it's 68 or 67?
It's 68.
So, so, yeah, I verified this with Amir, with Mr. McChie, that there are 67 parking spaces, but Amir was counting the, the pickup space-
Yeah.
-as a-
No, no, it was a Uber part that, you know, we-
As a-
We counted as a, my office manager counted as a parking space, so-
Well, not a parking space, but it says-
Yeah.
Will accommodate 68 vehicles.
67.
Can you pull up the, the site layout?
So it is 67. Yeah.
And then with the mouse, can you point, what you're counting is the 68th spot?
Can you go back to the?
He had it.
Yeah. So, basically this-
Yeah, there was a mistake.
Car being able to pull right, pull in right here to pick up, I guess. Mr. McChie was counting this as-
No, no, it was a mistake. It was an error. Yeah, it was an error.
Okay, all right.
So it's actually 67.
67, yes.
So note on the parking plan at 68?
Yes, it was an error.
I mean, it should be 67. Okay.
We don't, yeah, we're gonna buy decal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's 67 spaces, sorry.
Thank you. So if you all are done, then I'll open it up to questions from the board.
Okay.
Thank you. David?
Can you flip to the rendering that had the elevation of the proposed, exactly? Is that, is the distance between Southeast Commons and the Florence Bank building, is that to scale?
I would have to assume that it's very close of these, you know, you can pick distances and stuff off of, you know, the GIS, the, you know, Google Sites etc. Maybe Roy?
Roy, on, on the elevation that you have-
Please speak into the mic.
Sorry. That one, right. I think the dimension is shown there.
I can't read it, but do you know what it says?
No. Hold on. I think it's 72.
I think it's a question of whether this is, is accurate in 3D. I don't know. So, so that's a, that's a very accurate, yep, dimension and I would have to assume that's what is shown there.
Actually, I think about that second slide was, the slide that had the distance, that's what I was-
Oh, oh, okay.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Janet?
So, under the bylaw, you need to provide two parking spaces per unit. And so you have 61 units and you need 122 parking spaces. And the parking management plan largely consists of telling tenants they can't park. And so you're just taking them away instead of providing them. And I find that a little hard to absorb. I guess it's a way of managing parking by just not allowing parking, but it seems to kind of completely go around the requirement of the bylaw. And I wondered a few things, like what happens if somebody has, needs a car? And so you have somebody who signed a lease and they say they can't have a car, they changed jobs, they need a car. Do they just move out and go somewhere else? I mean, the, I think the issue here is the tenants' need for parking, not your need to have more units in this building. I assumed you'd come back with fewer units, smaller building, more parking spaces. I mean, if you, you can't find more parking spaces, you can't have so many units and so-
The thing, the idea was that we didn't want to create a kind of Walmart's kind of situation that you would-
A what?
Walmart parking, yeah, Walmart parking situation. That you would have a huge parking lot and not utilize. Basically, we are trying to, here it is, it is, we are, this is a small one-bedroom apartment and we anticipate that, you know, the person is gonna have one car. And we reduce the number of the units. There are some 10 units that basically are specifically, the tenants are told that this is the situation. When they come and they see the, the complex, they see the, as they see other places, that this is the one place that they can only have one parking space. And it is enforced and they cannot, you know, have more. And there is, you know, 10 visitor parking space. This is the, basically, and it is at their discretion that, you know, whether, you know, this would be accommodating to them or not. And we were encouraging in fact, in the very beginning, when, you know, we came up with this concept, we were encouraged that, you know, this should be it. And that's why, that was the reason that I donated the land and I paid for it, for the bus stop and, you know, the other bus stop. So that was the whole idea.
If I could just build on that comment. So what you're saying is you're trying to have a very rigorous parking management plan, yet we don't see the details in this or how it's going to be enforced, like building on it. If there's 10 apartments that have no parking, well, that doesn't mean that they won't have people coming to visit along with any of the units. So-
Sure.
What's gonna prevent people from just parking in the visitor parking or?
Like other-
So just, let me, so you've got stickers, you're saying, and so the people who do have parking have stickers, but you're not gonna have designated spaces. So how is the enforcement going to happen?
Basically, the same way that they do it in Presidential and Chris view, that they have this company, towing company, that they come and they check. And if there is no, if the car is not parking, is not, doesn't have a decal, they would be towed away.
So they outsource this? They hire a company to do this?
Yes, yes.
And so that's not detailed in your plan that you would hire, you know, that's-
Oh, I see.
A detail of how you're going to enforce it?
Okay.
And the number of permits and controlling visitor space?
I believe I, we put a decal here.
It just says enforced parking permit, but you don't actually detail how it's going to be enforced because that's a critical-
Yes, definitely. You're absolutely right. I believe I had a decal that, you know, we would, each resident would be issued decal for their, and it would be enforced and they would be told that, you know, this is enforced, like other places that, you know, in-
But it actually has the detail, you're gonna hire a company-
Sure.
How often they will be coming by. If there's violators, do they get a couple of like warning note or do they get towed? Just that kind of detail.
Sure, I would make sure that-
Because you're asking for a large variant, a waiver here, so we really need to understand how you're gonna handle that if you would be given that.
Okay, I would definitely have that for you.
Yeah, I'll just pick up on this idea. You're basically asking for half of the spaces that the zoning bylaw requires. And to go a little bit further with this visitor issue, visitors won't have decals. How are you gonna prevent the company that's going to tow unmarked cars from towing away visitors' cars?
As Christine said, I, we would have a designated, you know, area for the visitor.
The visitor parking spaces.
Yes, exactly.
So people who own cars who live in the apartment building could also park there?
Are you gonna designate?
Who don't have a permit.
Specific spaces for each apartment?
Yes. I mean, yeah, we would make more elaboration on the height is gonna be managed. Sure, yes, there is gonna be, I, if you go to Presidential apartment, there is, I believe, 12 or 15 parking only that says visitor. If you park anywhere else, you get towed away and it says it right there. And, you know, in the Chris view as well and at UMass as well, you know, if you do it. And the same thing, we would do it here. We would, every apartment would have their own space and for the visitor, that's what they, they would have.
Well, I think, I think you're asking a lot from the board for this kind of a waiver. I've noticed, I drive by that property three or four times a week and I've noticed three times in the last month that there have been two cars parked in the bus parking lot, bus parking stop, which you built across the street. How are you going to prevent cars from parking in the bus parking lot, parking spot that you're proposing to be-
Because we ask, we ask Amherst Police if they can do it and they said yes.
If they can do what?
If till the, it is specifically used by bus. So, right now, it is not bus stop. The space is there, it is constructed, it is there, but the bus doesn't stop there. And we asked Amherst Police, is it okay if the tenant at 148 Southeast Street could just park it there? And they said yes.
Oh, so that's a parking space then, not a bus-
No, it's not parking space there. But we asked if it is parked, is it okay or do you want me to? Because I own 148 Street. I asked Amherst Police, is it, do you want me to tell them strictly, restrict it not to park there? And he said, no, don't bother. But we, when we apply for the permit for 148, I do not designate that area as a parking space for the, for the tenant, sir. The tenant have, you know, four parking space as it is, you know, for the, for each house. There is no, that, and we, but the street is not part of the parking.
So when the bus PVTA or-
Exactly.
What's the service here?
PVTA.
Yeah. So when they adopt these new bus stops as formal stops, that's when, I guess, you know, there's gonna be no parking allowed on the street.
Well, my point is not that, that there is or is not parking lot, parking allowed there. My point is that there is demand for parking in that spot, which is currently being met by an area which Mr. McChie has referred to as a bus stop that he has built for the town. And I think that's somewhat disingenuous if you're referring to that for a bus stop.
It's not disingenuous, sir.
In fact, we use it as parking.
No, sir, if you go to the permitting of the, which we do it every year in Amherst, that we pay, you know, fee and we, we have to provide the parking space for the house, for each property. And for that property, the parking space is, is four parking space, four parking space is specified at the adjacent to the house. People are using that as a matter of convenience because Amherst Police, again, I said, I told the tenant not to do it, but when I asked Amherst Police, they said, no, let them use it for now. So it wasn't that, you know, hey, this is your parking space. They are just doing it for time being, as a matter of convenient. And if it is really something that it bothers the town, definitely I can tell the tenant not to park it there and we can ask Amherst Police to basically enforce it. I mean, there is no problem with that. There is plenty of, there is adequate parking for that 148 Southeast Street.
I think one of the reasons that there's a two, there's a two-car parking zoning requirement is that, so there's always some place for people to park. is that, so there's always some place for people to park who need to park there. What happens in your situation if you have eleven visitors? And a resident comes home and has no place to park? Where does he or she park?
Let me tell you this in two set. One is that when we were developing this concept, we were encouraged by the study that was basically showing that there is less people that are using, there are more people using Uber, there are more people using Zipcar. And there are more people tending to use bike, especially in the college town. So that was the encouragement. And also, it wasn't just my idea, it was, you know, also when we shared this idea with the town at that time, obviously we weren't there, but, you know, at that time, because this has been going on for a few years. We were encouraged by that, that yes, we want to have less parking spaces. We don't, we want to encourage people to basically have, to use other means. And that is basically what we did, that is what I did. And the thing that, you know, hypothetically, if in case, you know, you have a situation that you have eleven people, basically, then you would find other means, you know, you, they can, you know, maybe they can go to, across the street, to Auto Express, park there because they'll be closed at six o'clock, they can park there. Or they can, you know, they would know that, you know, this is the situation and they would manage. The way, I went to Presidential for a dinner party and I managed it. Basically, what we did, we went to, and we went back, we parked our car, went, so we came back with, instead of three car, we came back with one car.
My point is simply that the zoning bylaw recalls for two cars.
Exactly.
And I think it calls for that for a reason. And it may be that the world is moving toward fewer cars, and that is not a bad thing. On the other hand, the world may not be there yet, and the zoning requirement stands. And I see no real reason to give you this kind of two-for-one exception to what has been a longstanding zoning bylaw.
David?
I'm less concerned about the, that's the reason why there's a waiver and that's the reason why we're having a discussion, is to weigh the pros and cons. And I think that there are a lot of reasons why there may be a two-for-one zoning, parking requirement for the development of residential units. But I think that that also might be a historical artifact that we have the opportunity to, and that this proposal presents an opportunity to consider, are there other ways to accommodate the increase, the number of units there by accommodating greater other uses, other, other transportation uses? Mr. McChee's development of the bus stops and enhanced bicycle storage. I do think that the concerns about having a more robust management plan are warranted with the kind of waiver that you're asking for, particularly on the enforcement end. And especially if there, perhaps, and I'm, you know, just thinking out loud, that in the lease provisions, that, that there be understood for all the leases that, that parking violate, you know, violators of the parking agreement per the lease is a condition for breaking the lease. And so, you know, so that there are different levels of enforceability. Not just relying on outsourced survey, you know, monitors, but that it's also. And that, and that, I think, I think that's, I think where I would be open to further discussion of this because it's also a, it seems to me a commercial risk that Mr., the developer is undertaking that these may not be, this might, these might not be desirable units because of the lack of parking. And so then he's taking that risk that they're not going to be rented. And that's, that's part of the balance of development, it seems to me. So I'm a little bit less concerned about the rigid, potentially artifact of the parking requirement in the zoning laws. I do think though, again, related to this, that your neighbor, the Florence Bank representative, whose name escapes me, has raised this as a concern too. And, and that while you pointed out Auto Express's vacant spots after commercial hours might be available, so too will the neighboring unit. And so that's, that's an, that, I think is a real concern that you're acknowledging that, I'm not quite sure, has been addressed to your neighbor's satisfaction yet. And so I think that that should be put, built into your thinking of the, I would suggest building that into your thinking of the management plan if you want to revise that, is seeking their input perhaps. Will that meet some of their concerns as well, so?
Janet?
So that artifact is the bylaw, it's a law. And we can waive it under certain circumstances. And the question is, does this management plan reduce the need for tenants for parking? And to me, the building could have eighty units and twenty parking spaces under this management plan. We just don't let people park. So I'm thinking about tenants, I'm a landlord myself, and, you know, we're providing homes for people. And somebody moves in and they have one parking space, they get into a relationship, they have a baby, they need two cars. They have to move out. What if they have to move out in January? What if they have a job at Bay State? They get a new job at Bay State. They become an Uber driver, they need to drive around. So people's lives change. We all have this, like, fantasy millennial that, you know, basically lives on coffee and doesn't drive. And, you know, I looked at the bus schedules, it's great, I love the bus stop, but it doesn't increase bus service. And so if you were working at UMass or down in Hadley or North Hampton, you have pretty good bus service, very regular, really drops off on college breaks and it really drops off in the summer. If you had to work in Holyoke or at Bay State or in Springfield or parts of Belcher Town or let's go north, you know, you can't get there by bus. And so it's hard for me to say this is a sufficient management plan that tenants who move in, whose lives change, won't have parking and they have to move out or break a lease to do that. That just seems ridiculous to me. And I think that, you know, our parking bylaw, the section says two units per person. I could drop down to one point five, but I can't drop down to less than one. You're actually, you know, you come back with fewer spaces for people than you had before. And I just think that you need to reduce the number of units or the building size or both. You can make two-bedroom apartments, that would take, you know, that would make it easier. But managing parking by not letting people park is not, is just cutting parking. It's just, just working around the bylaw. I love the idea of people biking. I live in New England, I live on a street that people bike down a lot in the summer and hardly anybody in the winter on bad days. So let's, I feel like we have to be realistic and think about the tenants, think about the purpose of the bylaw, look at the requirements of our special permit. It has to be adequate, you have to recognize. And I just think this is really a runaround. And so, you know, if you have studies that show that the fact that two apartment complexes next to UMass that are filled with undergraduates only have one parking space, that kind of makes sense to me. I went and visited parking along Main Street and I saw on a Sunday morning, I figured, okay, Sunday morning's probably the best morning when people are there. And, you know, there were, there were seven out of thirty-four spots were empty. This is Mr., what is it? Robleski's spot. And so not every single spot was used, but more than one per unit. And then I went by a townhouse and every single parking spot at the townhouse was filled on a Sunday morning. And so I think that if you're going to, if you want to have a parking management plan, it has to be, demonstrate to me that people aren't going to need more than one car or no car throughout their tenancy.
So I, yeah, go ahead.
There must be a balance, I know. And in one hand, we have housing situations, lack of housing in Amherst. And also, we have lack of land. We have lack of land. This is not Chico Peak, this is not Holyoke. We have very limited land. So here we are, we're in the college town, and here we are encouraging. This is what, you know, there is a big risk here that I'm taking, that, you know, maybe I would be wrong and this would be vacant. I would have a serious problem then. But I'm willing to take that, to basically encourage, to basically take that, you know, here we are, that how we can bring a balanced development in the town that has a great need of good housing, good housing, not the rundown housing. Those, good housing for people. At the same time, we don't have enough land to designate, you know, for this. So how we can find a balance? And that's the balance, that's where we come up with waiver. That's, you know, to find that balance. It is the same thing. And also, we live in the, nobody's forcing people to come and, you know, people would see it. The same thing that, you know, when they go to the, when you go to Presidential and you say that I have two cars, they would tell you right there that you have one decal. And decal, and that is enforced. The same thing with UMass, the same thing with, you know, Crestview, the same thing with the other places. It's not like that, you would just go there and, you know, you want to park. This is what are we trying to do? If you are trying to be a progressive town, this is how we do it. And we have to find a balance. Yes, if it was a situation that we had plenty of space, you're absolutely right and it would make sense. But here, I'm taking a risk of doing that. Basically, I believe, I do believe, and we were encouraged that there are many people that really don't need a car, don't have car, and they don't want to have car. And, you know, to have a huge parking space, to me, is really ugly. Especially if, you know, if it is, we are talking about inconvenience or inconvenience, is really ugly. You know, now, thank God, we changed our mode of thinking and we are not putting parking by street, we are putting it in the back. But it's really a waste. Do we really want to have so much land devoted for just, you know, and we put the black top on it? At the time, when we are talking about, you know, all this thing about the environment, seriously?
So obviously by.
Wait, sorry, I just want to see if anyone else has a comment. Maria?
I just want to, so I do appreciate all the alternative transportation. And I think that what you're doing is helping create this village center sort of streetscape by putting the building against the street, hiding the parking. I know there's economics involved, so that's why you hit this sort of number of units, the parking. And I appreciated Janet Mescalon when you sent that sort of chart about, oh, no, you didn't send a chart, but you sent like the number of permits that were pulled by Kendrick on East Pleasant. And it's actually less than half of the, half of the beds have parking spaces. You know, granted, they are much closer to downtown, so they made accommodations. But, you know, like for the East Pleasant that has a hundred-two beds, you were saying there were like fifty-three parking permits pulled. So that's less than half. And then, sorry, that was Kendrick. East Pleasant has a hundred forty-three beds. There's fifty-one permits, you were saying, and thirty-six spaces. So that's eighty-nine parking spots. So it's not half, but it's close to that, you know, it's not two per unit. It's, it's a lot less. And I feel like if we do want to move in this direction of not being so car reliant, this is a good project to be spearheading that. I, I don't particularly feel like penalizing a project from going forward by saying two to one or one point five. I feel like they've made a concerted effort, the owner and his team, to really react and respond to the board's requests. I don't know if, you know, it probably would make the project impossible if it went down to two stories. I don't know the economics about it. So I just, I don't feel like it's, I don't know what word to use. But yeah, I don't want to penalize this project for something that's not a thing we necessarily want to encourage. I understand you're saying, you know, this is New England, it's winter environment, New Englanders can, you know, figure it out. I mean, these are all one-bedroom apartments. If there are three to four-bedroom apartments, then I would say, yeah, one, maybe one car per unit is a little much. But these are all single bedrooms, I believe. And two cars for a one-bedroom actually seems a little excessive, but that's what our bylaw currently says, so maybe that needs some review. But I, I actually appreciate the efforts. And I do need more detail in the parking management plan, but I'm actually in support of a lot of the efforts that have been made so far, so.
So you can see that there's, you know, some concern. You're right, you're taking a risk, there's choices to be made, there's decisions to be made. I just want to go through the parking management plan. So what it is right now is you have some people who are saying shrink your building to meet your parking, right? Which is a choice. And then we have others who are like, well, this might work, but we're not quite sure. So if we just look at the parking management part right now, I heard, you know, you've got to get more enforcement in there. You need to maybe address other parking nearby that you can utilize. Bus information, I know that had been mentioned, wait, meaning there's one bus? You mentioned, you should say the number, how often it comes. When I looked for nowadays, this in-school session, it comes thirty minutes, every thirty minutes is a bus. But what happens in the summer? Are there any buses? How often does it come? Is it every hour? Like, that needs to be written in there along with, so you have the bike room, which is twenty, which potentially ten of those could go away to your apartments that you've, you're giving this, giving it to them essentially. So that would only leave ten for fifty-one apartments. And the bike rack, now you've put two, I know you're paying for two, but one of them is in the public way, which means anybody can use it. So people could be using it to bike there, lock it in the public way and then take the bus. Like, so thank you for putting that, that bike rack there. But that only leaves one bike rack in the back for your tenants. So that's ten spots and ten spots. Again, you know, maybe a little more effort could be made towards that. One comment on the bike room, because that's new. I only see one door in and a long, like, room with no other outlet. Just as a woman, I'd be terrified to, like, go in there and not, like, I don't know. Maybe another outlet that could lead into the hallway or something. That was just a side note, I just, it was like a giant dark closet in my mind. So that's what I'm seeing. So what I'm asking the board is, you know, at this point right now, the, the owner developer is saying he's not open right now for shrinking his building. So what we have to do is be more rigorous ourselves in asking him, what would it take for us to be more comfortable with him asking for this little parking? So if there's more comments from the board regarding the parking management plan or anything that has to do with.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
We live in the free-market economy. And by the training, I studied economics at University of Massachusetts. So ABD. The market has its way to basically punish or to promote a good idea or bad idea. Many people had this hesitation about Uber, many people had the hesitation about Amazon, so many things, Facebooks, you name it. And look, so if we don't take initiative, if we don't do it, and here we really, what really think about it is that, you know, I am taking the risk and I appreciate that, you know, there are people who understand that. And I was, I'm taking that risk. And if I'm wrong, then basically it would be at my cost. You know, when I'm wrong, when these units are vacant, I wouldn't come to, the town of Amherst tax is not based on the vacancy, it's based on the property. So it is going to be me who will be penalized. It is going to be me who is going to be, basically has to pay for his idea. And I really believe this is the right way to do it. And, you know, as much as I appreciate the planning that, you know, you're, that you're concerned and we try to do all of this, we, I try to, the design of this building, if you really compare it to other buildings, it's not, you know, that's something that, you know, we just want to make it. we just want to make it few apartments and make it quick money. It's really, it goes so much into this, you know, changing just one thing takes, everything has to be changed, site plans, structure, architecture, so many things has to be changed, and you are aware of that, you all know that. But what you're really, you're saying, I'm hearing, is that it's really, it's all the thing is on me. And, you know, yes, I agree with you, we need, I have to explain about the parking, how to be enforced, definitely I will do that, definitely I will do that, because at the same time, I have to make sure that this place is a pleasant place that would encourage, would invite people, and making it a nice place that, you know, and I'm sure that, you know, people would come despite the fact that we are not offering, we are not offering lavish, you know, parking space. I believe it is good enough to encourage people to basically come here and, you know, not have their car and to use, and the buses, as far as the bus is concerned, it's the same route that goes to Colonial Village every 20 minutes, every 20 minutes is going to come and go. And basically, and just, and as far as reinforcing it, sure, I would definitely write it down and explain it more, but at the same time, just, it's going to be all on me, it's really, if you really look at it, that it's going to be paying for if I'm right or wrong. Yes, I understand, it's by law, but really look at other places in town, as Maria, you know, brought it up, it's not two to one, and, you know, in other places, this, you know, in fact, they say it right out to you that, you know, you have one space. And here I am, I'm not trying to take something from the town, I'm saying that this is a good idea, this is, you know, it's encouraging to other development, and you have done it, the planning has done it, the development in the center of Amherst was that, was a courageous act, and it worked out very well, you know, despite the fact that many people were, didn't approve it. Thank you so much.
Jack?
Yeah, I'd like to see more detail in the parking management plan as well. For instance, I'm, there'll be, I would imagine that you would add tenants that would want two parking places, not, not, not just one for the situations that Janet brought up. And so just more detail on, is it going to be a first-come, first-served basis? And then you really do have this need for alternatives of, for parking for visitors. What, I'm ignorant, and to, what are off-site parking options in this area? Are there arrangements with regard to private, you know, parking options? Even long-term parking options? Someone wants to live there, they don't want to use their car, but they have a car, what about that? I mean, I think all that kind of works for you, but I'm not, I don't know how to solve that, but I think that's something that would be to your advantage to present within the parking management program. I don't know the bus schedule, I don't know the route, I mean, I go by rolling green twice every day, basically, and I know how that works, and that's, you know, tons of people using the buses there, but on Southeast Street, I really don't know how the bus routes. I'd like to know how that works, and I'm sure it's to your benefit, as you have said. And then in the enforcement of the parking, I don't know how that works, how much, does that cost to have someone drive by, you know, on an hourly basis, or what is the plan for enforcement? That's more detail that would be helpful to have, and I know, you know, it's not insurmountable, but it's details that would give us a higher comfort level, I believe.
One of the things that would go a long way to alleviating my concerns, I think, would be a system picking up on what Jack said about the possibility that a tenant, a couple presumably might need two cars. Maybe what you ought to do is rent your apartments separately and rent your parking spaces separately. And you can't have a parking space unless you live there, but you can have one or two parking spaces if you live there, and, but those are specifically numbered and designated for a particular occupant, so if you've got number 44, that's where you park, and you don't park anywhere else, and that way you don't have to worry quite so much about the visitor thing, you don't park in 44. If somebody comes up, and if you're 44 and somebody says park there and you want to, you need to park, then it's kind of your responsibility to call the police or call the enforcement and get them towed so that you can park for the night. And then that way, what you're doing is you're putting a specific price on the parking, whatever that turns out to be economically for you makes sense, and then you have a totally different price for the apartment itself. And they are related, but they're not the same thing, they're two different contracts. The exception being that you could only have a contract to park if you live there. That might be a way out of the problem. I still don't think there's enough parking places there, because I think you're still going to have visitor issues, but there we are.
At the same time, remember, it's 590 square feet, one-bedroom apartment, this is, it's not going to be, you know, so it is, the person is going to be, is intended for one person, so, but your points are very valid, I would definitely consider that. At the same time, you know, sometimes you open up, and then, you know, you would have all these, and you have to see how it works out. You really don't know how exactly it's going to work out, I can see your concern, and I would definitely do my best to, because that's my investment, I have to make sure it works out, I have convinced the bank that it works out, so I have to, and it has to work out, so I make sure that, you know, I would pay it. But thank you so much for your advice, that would be, maybe we would do that, that we would designate each space to a specific apartment, and we would reinforce it.
I just want to add something on something that Michael brought up, because that is an interesting concept, and you sort of would have to decide in your enforcement plan, parking, which way you'd want to go. You know, subcontracting and having enforcement there all the time is one thing, but having each apartment have its one designated parking, but if we can just spin through the numbers for a moment, everyone put your numbers on quick. So if you have 67 spots and you take off four that are handicapped, which could be used, but they could not be used, you can't always count on them, because they just sit there, because only handicap people can park in them. If you don't have handicap people, then nobody's using them, but that's the way the law is, so we do them. Then take away two more for, you keep calling it Uber, but it's probably like shared ride is what you want to say, because it could be Lyft or whatever else develops in the future, so instead of Uber, it's a shared ride spot. So there's two of them, that brings you down to 61. Then, I think it's-
The Uber had its own space.
Zipcar, you called it zipcar.
Yeah, okay.
So then, I think it's conservative, you have four business spots right now, I really think it would be closer to five to be a nice number, where you've got two businesses and you're not even sure what they're going to be yet, which I'll ask about that later, but that four, if we just go with four, that brings it down to 57. Then you have to take off the 10 visitor spots. So now we're down to 47, and we'll say 51 apartments, because we took off, if you go, you know, that, that 10 won't have parking, that's not 61, it's 51. So you have 47 spots for 51 apartments that you would designate, if we go with Michael's idea of designating a spot, you don't have enough spots left in your lot to give your 51 apartments one spot. So this is where I'm having a little bit of a wiggle, you know, it is a balance, but are we tipped a little too much one way or the other? You really, and that's why we're really pushing, come out with a rigorous parking plan, because I think you will have aha moments in it, like, is this really going to work? Because we want you to be a success. The success, the risk is that you don't have, you have vacancies, the success is you're full up, but so isn't your parking. So that's where we want you to be successful, but we're afraid you'll be too successful. So I think Janet had her hand up.
So all the apartment complexes in the area around the Village Center, which is delineated, have two spots, there's a lot of parking. We have a downtown parking district that's a no-parking district, and when the idea was people weren't going to need cars. And so, you know, one East Pleasant Street has 34 parking spaces, and it has, this year it has, last year it had 36 requests for parking in town, now it's up to 51, so they're at 85, so, you know, and it's per unit. So I understand what you're saying about beds. You know, Kendrick Place has 36 apartments, they have 43 people requesting parking in downtown Amherst. And so, that's the reality. And so the other reality is, we can give you this waiver if there's a parking plan. Said plan shall include the implementation of such measures as car and van pooling, bicycling and public transit use sufficient to reduce the need for parking. It doesn't say cutting out spaces and putting leases so you don't let people park, that doesn't reduce the need for parking, it just takes parking away. And so, is there a car and van pool thing? Do you have an idea where people are going to be working, that they're going to take the bus to, because it better be Amherst, you know, Center or UMass or Hampshire? Are there statistics about where people will be working? Are you going to, are people going to have to leave if they need a car? I mean, just, it's, so you have to focus on the need of the tenants. I love the idea of a car-free world, I don't think anybody here bikes to work, you know?
Why don't you, why don't we think that people are smart? This is college town. Why do you think that people are, cannot make a right decision about where to leave? And, you know, they see it, they see, you know, they-
I could just say, why can't you just meet the requirement of the bylaw? I think we're all willing to be flexible, but we're focusing on the needs of tenants and what people need.
Let's listen to each other or one at a time. Chris, do you have something to say?
I wanted to point out something that maybe is the elephant in the room. There are only six planning board members here, and six planning board members who are eligible to vote on this project, and this project needs five planning board members to vote in the affirmative for both the site plan review and the special permit. So I wonder if the planning board members who are concerned especially about parking would advise Mr. McChee to drop some of his units? And what number of units could he drop that would make it reasonable for you to vote for this project? Because I'm afraid that this project may head down a road where it's not, not approvable. And I think Mr. McChee doesn't want to get there, so is there some sort of negotiation that you can do that would perhaps come up with a number that you think would be appropriate? Or another alternative is that he could withdraw his application and come back with a, with a changed application? So I think, you know, I don't want this project to go down in smoke, and he's worked really hard on it, he's put a lot of effort into it, and his designers have worked really hard on it, but is there-
So the number that could come to, the range of numbers that might get more available, my potential to get the project approved?
Well, if we went with, if the existing design stays, I'm not an architect, but, I mean, the only way you'd really reduce it is you either slice one whole, six units out to two and two, and shrink it, I mean, you're at your 70% coverage right now, and that would reduce, now you had one, so then that reduces your need for parking, and you'd meet it, and you'd also have space. You could redesign, I mean, it is, you're trying to fit a size 12-foot and a size 10 shoe, like, it's really close, but this is the problem. I mean, we have varying opinions on the board on how much of a variance would be the right balance or fair, but right now, I think, so I'm asking, so one side question I want, so they redid the parking lot, did the, did we get the fire department to come back to say if they can get their trucks in, if that's-
I reached out to the fire department, but I have not heard from him, and I wonder if Mr. Liu has had a conversation with the fire department since the parking has been redesigned?
No, we haven't had a conversation about that, the, about the layout, the revised layout.
So I'm just saying, I don't see a vote happening tonight, because we need to have a more rigorous parking plan, we need to hear from the fire department if this, what it's been designed even works. And then maybe some more questions from the board specifics of what, since we know we have to continue this again, what else do they need to do? What else do they need to bring back to us? And maybe that's where we're at right now.
As far as the fire department is concerned, I believe it is okay, because he has to put it in writing.
Speak up.
As far as the parking, yeah, the parking was not revised as much, in fact, we made it better rotation, it is straight right there in the corner.
Right.
You could be right, but we need to hear from the fire department, that's the problem. And you did redesign the lower southwest area, so it is a little bit more pinch point, and you're turning part of it into one way. Anyways-
No, actually, it has been, the driver has been expanded two feet.
No, no.
You've got, yeah, I don't, yeah.
But the thing is that I didn't come up with this number of the parking out of blue. This project has been, you know, if you go to Hampshire, you see, 10 years ago, when there was no development, I proposed that, and, you know, I have been going, you know, to the town, every step of the way, that, you know, and in fact, I was encouraged, yes, you told me that there was, you know, misguidance, and there was miscommunication, it wasn't you, but it wasn't just that, you know, I developed this, I developed this, that, you know, out of blue, it wasn't. And there was, you know, I worked hard for this, and it really, you know, changing one feet or two inch would change the whole thing. Four months, we had to wait for the tree situation, and you, and now that, you know, we have the, everybody is lined up, we are, if we move, if this doesn't happen, you basically go to the winter, so what are we really trying to do? Trying to make it impossible for a small guy? Because I tell you, I am a small guy, proud guy, a small guy, graduate from UMass. I'm not the guy that, you know, has a fair, you know, equity firm with millions of dollars coming and just buying out, not negotiating, just buying out the center of Amherst for few million dollar, I'm not that type. I have worked so hard, and everybody is lined up, if we don't, you know, and in fact, you can ask Chris, we already put it on the table, we did everything, that tonight, when it is done, we would just, tomorrow, they would start, you know, doing the foundation, not so we wouldn't lose the winter. This is how, you know, and the thing is that, you know, you cannot just have the contractor to come, you know, at, you know, it is, it goes so much, I, I don't, did you share it with the plan for the timetable? It really takes time, and it really is, I'm really asking, seriously, you know, going back, can we really, it's really hard. I mean, yes, you're saying that you don't want to kill it, but in fact, it has been killed, the fact that, you know, four months was, had to be wasted, the whole summer was gone for this, and we just, as soon as we got the permit for the tree, go see, it's all level, all clear, you're ready to go. You know, I designated the one house for the headquarters, we didn't, we didn't want it to have a trailer, so that it would make it easier for them to go. And then on the other hand, we talk about need for the good housing, good housing, not, you know, round down housing, not the house, you know, housing that, you know, even you punch the shit rug and your hand goes to the other room. We are talking about good housing, you know, with a sprinkler, that, you know, would be, have a safety, have everything. And here we are, we are, you know, you're, I'm sorry, but by doing this back and forth, you really are, I don't want to use, yes, in fact, you are killing the project. And it's not fair for the guy like me, who works so hard, to come up with this, you know, and I don't have, I didn't come with the attorney, I didn't come with the big guys, you know, asking that, hey, we are going to do this or we are going to do that. Conservation asked for four to one, we gave them four to one by law, by law says two to one. If you want to lose the- If you want to lose the wetland, we had isolated wetland right in the middle, right in the middle of the parking lot, eight hundred square feet. But by law says two to one. You can replicate two to one. We end up four to one, four to one. Where is the bylaw for that? And then, on the top of it, I had, I made eight thousand dollar donation for improvement and of that thing. You were there. You know it from the one that, you know, about the, oh, you weren't there, sorry, not you.
Not me.
But it's just, you know, please, you know, I'm, I'm coming here and this is, this is the... It's just, I'm not begging for mercy. I'm not, you know, and this is, and if I'm wrong, then the more, the people would punish me by not, you know, coming to my place. And, but I assure you, they would. When they see a good place, they would. People recognize that. There is, you know, and we are encouraging, we are talking about climate change. We are talking about, you know, reducing. So where is, you know, where are we going to put our action, where we say something?
Mr. McChi, I can see you're very frustrated with the process. We treat every project equally here and we just need certain information for us to make decisions on our jurisdiction. So, I know this is frustrating, but we're asking for more information, basically, is what's happening here. And we asked for a management plan, a parking, and it, it isn't detailed enough. So I think we've talked a lot about that, but we need, we know you're taking a risk. We know you're a small businessman who's trying to do something new here in this part of town. But because we need to, we need the information so we can be comfortable in making our decision. So, so just if...
But the information's out there.
We've told you some stuff tonight that we need to have because of the parking. And maybe at this point, we can move on to some, if, if there are any other comments about the plans that they've brought.
I honestly urge you to really consider this.
We, we are.
I would give you the management plan, the parking management plan. But please, I'm really asking you, because, you know, if we go with another two, I, when is it, October eighteen? That, you know, we would come, last time you told us, I think, I have been going back and forth with Chris for every sentence of this, in fact. And we really, I'm trying so hard, and it's not just me, it's really all of us, really making it almost impossible.
I understand construction schedules and how the winter is bearing down. And I understand how much you would lose if you don't get certain things done by the fall. So, I'm, Chris, I, and I, if you have, I just want to ask if, if the applicant can have some extra help from town staff so that this can sort of just get addressed? You know, like, today, it would have been great if we had a more rigorous plan and more information. And, and we were getting drawings up till, like, today. And it's just hard for us, you know, to be doing this all on the quick. So, Chris, is there a way that we can give more assistance?
I've been advising Mr. McChi about what the needs of the planning board are and what the expectations of the planning board are. I'm not sure if I give him more assistance if we're going to get to yes. I have the feeling that there are still strong reservations about this project. And I would suggest to Mr. McChi that he strongly consider dropping some units and that may get him to yes. I would be disappointed if we put a lot of effort into a parking management plan and then came back in two weeks and we didn't get to yes. I also think that Mr. McChi needs a building permit and he has not submitted a set of building permit drawings or a building application to the building commissioner.
We did, Chris. We did today.
You did, today?
Yes.
And he can't take it until after you get your site plan review?
Exactly.
So he needs the site plan review in order to get the building permit. So I think it's going, in my opinion, here it is, you know, beginning of October. I strongly doubt that there's going to be a lot of construction this winter. He might be able to get a foundation built. But if I were him, I would drop some units and get to yes with the planning board and move ahead with this project. I think if we keep revising the parking management plan, we're going to come up against the same arguments that we have already come up with. So, that would be my advice.
Jack?
Chris, the history on the project, you said it was initially presented for forty-seven units?
So I looked into that and I looked at the drawings that were submitted to the planning board for review in June of two thousand eighteen, and the building was smaller. It was narrower. It only had forty-seven units in it. And at that time, the planning board was mainly focused on whether they would agree to consider a lessening of the setback on the east side and the north side. So, I don't think you were really looking at the design of the project as much as you were considering whether you wanted a project of forty-seven units in this village center with X number of parking spaces and whether you could accommodate a setback that would be less than ten feet. And you said, yes, you could, and that you would support the project the way it was presented then. So this is a bigger project. It is covering more of the property. It's got more units. It's got more parking. There are differences between this project and the project that you saw in June of two thousand eighteen. So, I, I feel strongly that if Mr. McChi dropped some units, that he might be able to get to yes in two weeks. If he doesn't drop any units and he just amends the parking management plan, I doubt that he's going to get five yes votes. That's my recommendation and my opinion.
I do agree, if you're racing winter, we can continue on with the existing design you have, but it will probably take more than two weeks and you're not guaranteed an approval by five members. I know this is hard for you. I mean, if you're coming back in two weeks, I mean, you have time to explore the choices. If you want to keep both choices open, we can give you more feedback on your current design.
Could I, yes?
If you can speak in the mic, please. No problem.
You have short wires.
Yeah.
The question got raised about a number of units. And I'm wondering if it's reasonable to ask the board for a straw poll? It might be, and I haven't raised this question with, with Mr. McChi at all or anyone else on the, on the design team. But it, it might not be, it might be the easiest way to, to change the building to, to lop off six units to two and two and pull a staircase in, which would reduce the number of units. So this is just a what-if. And what if, if, if the design team, especially the owner, and I, and I feel for the owner very much, and, and, and you may also. But that might be a possibility. So I'm, I'm asking if the, if the board would consider taking a straw poll at this point so that we would have a direction forward for the next two weeks? If, if six units were lopped off and we ended up with, instead of sixty-one, we ended up with fifty-five? If that might be something the board might consider?
So, before we entertain that, I was going to ask for maybe a straw poll on if we even would want to do that. And I guess what they're saying is if they took six apartments off, before I had had said there were forty-seven, if, after you take off the handicapped and the shared ride and zip and the businesses and the visitor, you had forty-seven spots left for fifty-one apartments. So if you took off six, you'd have forty-five apartments and forty-seven spaces. So you'd have more than one for every one of the forty-five apartments. That still leaves ten. I'm assuming that would be no parking units. And you have still the ten visitor, the four business. So I guess what I'm asking is, do we want to take a straw poll on how we would feel if they did take off six units? Jack? Or, actually, first, let me just ask, David, do you want to answer that or was it related?
No, I was going to add, posing back to your, your map with the forty-five square spaces and so on.
Excellent. Okay. Jack?
I, I don't, the, the, a concept were the two, two and two. I don't understand that. So I need to see something.
Pull up a different, yeah.
And then, would, if that happened, there would be additional spaces? Is that part in your...
So, well, they might be able to configure more.
So, basically, you're talking about, he's proposing to basically get rid of the...
Michael, yeah, if you...
Get rid of that section of the building.
Jack, if, if, for instance, this, these, there's two units here on each floor. So if, if this block was eliminated, you'd eliminate six units out of the floor, or out of the total floor plan?
But the main concern is the parking, right? Parking.
Finding that balance.
So how about if we would designate some of the, because this is what, you know, I was thinking of, of the unit for the gym, so that, you know, the tenant would have a space for gym. It's not rental. We would have fewer tenants.
Can I also add, what about laundromat? There's no laundry in this building.
Because every unit is provided with the washer and dryer and dishwasher.
So, I mean, gym is interesting, but you've got a, like, a gym on every floor?
You don't have gym.
Like, I, I don't understand. Clarify what you're saying.
Basically, you can have three units or four units in the first floor for the gym. Then, basically, we are have four less tenant.
So you would convert...
As far, as I understand it...
Without, so...
No, go ahead. You're saying it, two.
As I understand it, you would convert four apartments...
Exactly.
Into one gym, reducing the total number of rentable units by the four or whatever. And, and reducing the need, and that, that gym would just be for tenants' use.
Yes, of course.
Am I correct? Is that my...
Basically, the idea is, because if we want to change, with all due respect to my dear friend Roy, if you want to change anything to the building, it's gonna, we have already submitted the structure, everything, trying to reduce the size of the building, which causes so many changes. But since the problem is a parking space, how about that? You know, that we would designate some units for the gym and we also increase the, the size of the retail.
So size would be, the building would be the same? The whole, the footprint and the envelope would be the same for the building? But you reduce four, so that would be forty-seven spots for forty-seven units?
Yes.
Well, instead of a straw poll at this point, for, who, who would have issue with that? It's, not to point, but what... Or on the, who would feel good about that? I mean, it's, yeah, David.
Mr. McChi, I know that you've been working with the planning department since, I've heard about your project since I started on this board, however long ago that was. And, and I do agree that supporting cooperative and local developers who are invested in many ways is, is what I'd like to encourage. I think we'd all like to encourage. Frustrating as it is, I, I think that developing a more robust management plan with the flex, the flexibility and reducing the number of units, I think I would be comfortable with favoring this proposal, especially if there are accommodations made with neighbors, with, whether it's Auto Express across the street, Florence Bank for after-hour use. And that that's, you know, that's a way to sort of develop, develop those relations and, and, and anticipate any fallout from, from, from that. But, you know, I, I agree with a lot of what you're saying about the risks that you're taking and, and the risk that we need to take in order to balance housing needs and, and sustainability issues. I think that these are really important concerns that aren't, that don't always have to be directly in conflict with one another.
So if this team is gonna come forward and make new drawings with taking away another four units to make it fifty-seven units with sixty-seven spots, parking spots, who here has issues with that and would have a problem with voting on that in two weeks if all the necessary paperwork and descriptions are brought forward? Because I think we need to be fair to the developer and, and say if we're still not comfortable or, or actually say what we still, what more we want to make this an approvable project.
So, so I think Florence Bank doesn't want to be overflow parking from, that's why they came in and expressed their concern about the lack of parking. They thought the parking on the site was insufficient. Maybe Auto Express is fine for parking at night. And I actually think that's a good, great idea to double up on things. And so, maybe Florence Bank, you know, they're, they understood, they agreed to that or, you know, thought that was safe or monitored, they might agree to that. That, that sounds fine to me. But I think that between last time we were here and here, this time, we've actually, we, we went from like one parking space per unit to less, and that's very concerning to me. And now it looks like we're at least have a parking space, plus the businesses, which I think during the day, there's not going to be as much use and you can do it two-time, you know, you assume that and stuff like that. So it seems like more flexibility. But if you could find someplace for people to park when they need it, I'm really focused, not just, I'm really focused on what tenants, you know, people could live in those buildings for ten or fifteen years. They could double up. They could have their, you know, there could be a single parent who has a teen visiting who needs a car. I mean, there's all these things that happen to people in their lives and I don't think we should force them to move out, especially one, everyone around, all the building, apartment buildings around had to make two spaces, you know? And then, again, the no parking thing is not working. So, so I see, I like the flexibility, but I need to be convinced that there's someplace for people to go.
Honestly, I was, I wanted to propose from day one that, you know, at night, after six o'clock, when the Auto Express is closed, there is thirty-five parking spaces that is empty and we have, you know, surveillance there. But, you know, I was advised not to bring it up. I don't say the name, but I was advised by people not to bring it up. And that's why I didn't bring it up. But anyway, but yes, it is available. And, you know, we would tell people, we would, you know, we would encourage them that, you know, they could, you know, if in case they have visitors, they could, you know, use that.
Well, we're glad it's been brought up. So when you address it in the parking plan, just trying to foresee questions, it would come up with that. You know, it is a business that starts at a certain hour, so I assume you'd have clar, like, they could only park there to a certain hour or certain spaces. So, you know, get a little in the weeds, get a little, and we want to see that. Chris?
We did broach this topic with Mr. McChi earlier in this process. There are some complications associated with shared or leased parking. So, he needs to read through section seven point two of the zoning bylaw and understand what it means to share or lease. And existing parking needs to be at least a hundred and twenty percent of what is required for the use. In other words, the use where he's using the parking.
What page is that, Chris?
It's on page eighty-five of the new zoning bylaw. I am not conversant right now on all the ins and outs of this. But if he does choose to go that route, then I think, according to the building commissioner, he's going to have to change his permitting on his Auto Express parcel to allow parking there at night. And it's going to have to be timed. So it's more complicated than it seems on the surface. It can certainly be worked out, but it needs to be addressed. So, I would advise Mr. Chi and his consultants to read this section seven point two and come in and talk to me and the building commissioner about how this can be managed.
Does that sound like something you could schedule in? Does that sound like something you can schedule in?
Yeah, but, we brought it up, but it is, it creates more complication.
Of course.
So that's why. So I would ask if the board would be comfortable with, you know, reducing four units, designating four units for other use, okay, for the gym or the retail, not increasing retail, but increasing the size of the retail. And we would have four less tenant. If the board would be fine with that.
I, I think you heard that, and then one of the comments was...
It is very complicated, and I don't want to go through that, because I know it is how hard it is to bring the Auto Express, even though I own it, for the parking situation. It can work as, you know, on the, if you can say, don't ask, don't tell kind of situation. But, you know, if you want to put it on writing, it is going to be more complication than this. At least I have been around enough in this town to know.
So, Chris, so, so complicated it's not doable, like...
Yes.
I think it's doable, it's just a question of whether Mr. McChie wants to go through another permitting process on his other property in order to allow this to happen. And so, you know, it'll probably be a site plan review with the planning board on the other property to allow this to happen. So it's not just completely straightforward and informal arrangement.
But it would come to us.
It would come to you. I'd have to look at what the permitting is for Auto Express. Is it a special permit with the zoning board of appeals, or was it a site plan review with the planning board? So whoever has the basic permit for that property would be the board that you would need to go to, to talk about shared parking. So it's certainly, it's...
So it's us or CBA?
I believe it's doable, it's just something that needs to be done and taken care of, and it's not completely straightforward. It's going to require an application and a fee and a plan to show, he's going to have to show on Auto Express property where all the parking spaces are, how many are used for Auto Express business, when they're there, when they're not there, when the residents are going to be parking there. So it's, you know, this is something that, that, think about the building commissioner and his staff of inspectors, who are going to have to enforce this in the future, you know, three years from now, four years from now, when people are parking at Auto Express, and then people who are going to Auto Express can't find parking, and then, you know, people are parking in the backyard of adjacent residential buildings, and it just gets very complicated. And the building commissioner needs to have clear directions in conditions that the planning board or the CBA develops to allow him to know what is, what has been approved, and exactly what can he enforce.
Couldn't this be changed when the second parcel across the street is developed, and it could remove the pressure on that building, and it could be built into that project?
It could be, but I think you're going to run into the same issues with the new building across the street as you have with this building, that, you know, the effort is going to be to maximize the number of units, and we don't know what that means for the number of parking spaces. So I think it's not, it's not a question of saying, oh, there's this land across the street that can be used to solve this problem. It's something that has to be documented and has to be enforceable for the future.
So this is choices again. Everything's a headache, you know? It's, reducing the size of the building is hard. Going through this process to find supplemental parking in the neighborhood is hard. I, I think this is where you're going to have to...
That's why, you know, I asked you, I said that, you know, here we are, we are reducing two, four units, and what is hard about this? We are losing four units.
Michael?
Let me ask you a hypothetical.
Sure.
Can you give a rough estimate of how many parking spaces the Auto Express might yield overnight?
Auto Express is on its own. It's a corporation, it is on its own, it has, you know, there is a bank that is involved. I cannot easily just go and, you know, ask something for Auto Express. Every entity should be separate, and we look into it with the building inspector, and it's just very complicated, sir. Legally, it is very complicated.
So you're saying you're not willing to consider that option?
No, it's not that, you know, I said, if it is on the basis of don't ask, don't tell, it would work.
But we're not going to operate on don't ask, don't tell.
Exactly.
What you're, what you're saying is you're not willing to consider the legal ramifications of that option, of parking across the street.
No, it's not that. It's more complicated.
I understand, sir, that it's more complicated, but I'm just, I'm just trying to say, are you, is that something that you will, is that something that you will consider? Yes or no?
I don't think that, you know, with the less four, less units, there would be need for the Auto Express.
So that's off the table.
Sure, thank you, Mike.
Okay. So if that's off the table, I'm not sure we can guarantee full happiness if you just change the four units. I think everyone can think about it, you know?
It is impossible, man. It is impossible to bring another entity. You can, it's, it's, it is impossible, because every entity has its own corp, thing. It's impossible, you cannot. And there is, there is, there is a risk involved. What happened if somebody would go there and, you know, get, you know, into accident? There is a risk involved. And I believe that, you know, as it is, you spent so much time saying that, you know, reduce the number of units. My good friend took initiative even without me, which is okay. He said, okay, we would reduce the number of units. And I said, sure, we'll do that. We cannot shrink the building, because to do that, that means the structure of, everything has to be changed, you know, so, and everybody has now to come up with a different number. So I said, let's not do that, we just get rid of four units. We designated for, I don't know, more, for gym, for lobby, for whatever, but there is, you'd have less tenant. I mean, I think this is very fair.
Okay. Jack?
I'm wondering about the, how'd you come up with the fat, or you are decreasing the demand on parking by having ten apartments restricted? Why ten? Can it be fifteen? Can it be twenty?
I asked, I asked, I asked if ten works, and they said, I was told, yes.
So that's a number that was... So that number can you change?
Well, I think in your, in your vision, I think that's what you're, you're thinking, that people aren't going to be using cars. I mean, that's your vision, and I, I'm sure you're right, but it's 2020 right now, we're not to 2040 yet, you know? But I, I do believe you are correct in your, in how people are going to commute. So not an issue, but I'm wondering if it should be more.
Seriously, I mean, here I am with the timetable, with the construction, and, tell me, I, I reduced the four units, and, you know, if you think twelve unit, biker unit would do the magic, sure, I will do that.
Michael?
Yes?
I go back to my suggestion of a while ago. If ten is not the right number, or twelve, or fifteen, or what, what, let the market decide. Rent, rent the bill, just a minute, rent, rent the apartments without any parking spaces and rent the parking spaces separately. First come, first served.
Is it possibility that...
If two people are living in one, in one apartment, they could have two cars, if they get there first and pay the extra, whatever it is per month, that you think is the right number.
Is it the way that the planning board would, would be comfortable?
It's totally outside the bounds of the, of the bylaw, but it's an idea.
You tell me.
I, I think we have to follow, we're, we're a legal entity, we're a planning board, we have to enforce the bylaw, and we can give exemptions and waivers, and the bylaw tells us when we can. And so the focus in this exemption is on the needs of the tenant, not the needs, and so I, so the exemption is if you can reduce the need for parking by carpooling, vans, public transit, which we know have problems, you know, or other measures, but I don't think we can just take parking spaces away and say, hey, we reduce the need, because you don't get to have a car. I mean, I think that turns the whole thing on its head, and I, I don't even understand, like, the ramifications going forward. You know, all these people have apartment complexes in Amherst, they've all had to build their two spaces, except for, you know, near UMass, for whatever reason, I can't speak to it. And going forward, are we going to just have apartment buildings in Amherst with no parking? And then, you know, downtown, we have a huge pressure to build parking spaces, we, you know, it's like, what are, where are we going? It's like, where, where we're going is, I think, is we have to follow the bylaw, and the bylaw says two units, two parking spaces per unit. I'm willing to go down, I mean, you know, if you reduce your four units or eight, you're freeing up spaces. You've already added, you know, you added ten visitor spaces, but you took ten away from the tenants. So we went from tenants having one parking space to less than one. So reducing units is the way to do it. I'm not really sure why you can't reduce the size of the building, but I understand that you don't want to.
No, no, no.
But we could reduce the number of units. So I think you have to understand, like, the way, but let me finish. The way I'm looking at it, because I'm an attorney, is that I don't actually have the legal authority to give you an exemption, because I think it's like a good idea. It has to come from language in this bylaw. It has to focus on the needs of tenants, not everybody else's needs. I mean, you know, it's just, give me a plan that reduces the need for tenants for cars and doesn't just take away a parking space.
We did, and it is very sincere effort, and no carpooling. It doesn't work. If I promise something, I'm, it's, it doesn't work. I don't want to promise something that doesn't work. It's not carpooling, it's not going to work. This is Amherst. People go to UMass, you know, because you cannot, they don't have parking space in UMass. So many people don't have car, they don't. Even for the people who work there, they have to go by the lottery, and they have to pay four hundred dollar, and then they have to walk so long, because I've worked at UMass too. So I know about this, and I really believe that, you know, and here, I'm not taking away from the resident, I'm saying that, look, you want to live here, this is a situation, and if you like it, you're welcome. I'm not forcing anyone, and I'm not putting, I'm not asking them to go to Florence.
Address the board, so it doesn't get so...
Yeah, I'm not asking them to go to, park in Florence or Park, they cannot, they cannot park in the street, because they would be pulled away. They cannot park anywhere else. This is not even the downtown, that, you know, they could go to other street, it's not. So if it doesn't work, it doesn't work for them.
We're, we're getting a little to like a stalemate here, and it's getting late, so I just want to say, you're going to come back. I, I think it's, I think it's a good idea to reduce the four units and use it as gym space or whatever, or bigger retail or whatever. So if you were to come back in two weeks with that, I just want to ask the board, is there anything else that you are concerned with, that you want to ask or say, because I don't, we want to tell him everything now so they can work on it. We don't want him to come back in two weeks after making all these, and then we're like, oh, and this, and this, and this. So speak now, I know I had a little list here. Jack?
To follow up on what you said before, I mean, if you really want to make this, you know, not dependent on the vehicles, Christine had mentioned the, the number of bike racks. I mean, if you lose those four units, I, maybe that's an opportunity to expand more by, if you really are serious about this. So you have to encourage your tenants and give them every opportunity, because right now, I think you do have a bike problem to really make it work, so.
Sure.
I know, I, back to your, the layout plan, the site layout, oh, I'm really pleased with the pull-off spot. I think that's going to be really used a lot, and it also is more welcoming for your building, for people to come in. Back to, I'm just, so I love what you did on the northwest side, where you have an exit door, and you come out onto the sidewalk, and then they can actually walk on a sidewalk to the dumpsters, which I think is great. My only other concern, and I know you're tight on space, but it is, you're looking at everything, if you come out the other door on the southeast side, if you had parked over like, let's say, where those new spots went in, over where you're going to put a retaining wall in, if they come down that sidewalk, you hit a landscaped island, and again, there's nowhere to escape except squeezing between cars or walking under trees or through bushes again.
Excuse me, can Mr. Lou put up a site plan so you can see what you're talking about?
Uh, yeah. So if you come out the southeast door...
That door? The egress door?
Yep. So, and if you went down the sidewalk, heading to the parking lot?
Here.
Nope, head, well, so you're...
Right, so there's a...
So see the spots you added, where the retaining wall is? You move the mouse like that, because it's, people, nope, nope.
The spots around the bend, yeah.
Yep, those, exactly. So let's take the one at the top, and let's pretend that's where your car is, and you come out the southeast door, how do you get there, besides coming, walking through the handicap spots, and then walking in the driveway all the way to that spot? I would have expected that when you came out and go down the sidewalk, yeah, you hit that landscaped island right now, that should be a ramp that brings you to that area of parking, and so that people don't just have to squeeze. This is like, this is good layout. You're, you're trying, again, what I said last time, is you're trying to show that you are pedestrian-friendly, because pedestrian connects all modes, all modes, and you definitely want to show that people can walk in and out of the buildings and get to their parking spots without having to squeeze between compact car spaces. So that was a spot where I still saw, you know, we're trying to build a building that's going to last a long time, and you want to build it right. You want to build something I know that you're proud of, and you don't afterwards go, ugh, ugh. So that was just one part. And I know you're at the seventy percent and you're tight, but everything else, I like where the lights have been moved, I like the streetlights, I think there's a lot of good flow, and there'll be a lot of good light. Does anyone else have anything? Chris?
I strongly urge either the applicant or Mr. Lou to contact Mike Roy and talk to him about the parking spaces that have been added in the southwest corner, because I'm really not sure that the fire truck is going to be able to come in that driveway and come around that southwest corner and not hit any of the cars that are parked there, because they have a big extension on the back of their truck, and if there's a pickup truck or something like a van or something like that parked there, they're not going to be able to get through. So if, if the fire department says that it works, then I think the planning board can be assured, but we don't have anything in writing from the fire department about this new plan.
Yeah. You'd have to, yeah, yeah, I'd do that first before you go change anything. Anybody else have any other issues that they might have, like the windows? We had talked about, Maria, what was that, what'd you call?
Yeah, I don't know any of the other ones. I was just a little, I guess a little bit of the plan, there's no difference between the four elevations, the four or two floors.
The, oh. We, we talked to the window supplier, and, and he came up with a bronze tint window that's going to make it a little bit more difficult for people who are walking by to see in. That was their question that was raised at the last meeting. They're a little more expensive, but, but that's the plan. So on the first floor, where there are sidewalks, that's the plan.
Can those sample, like, be sent to Ms. Bestrop, so we, you know, like the lights, so that we have an assurance that...
You, you want sample windows?
Like a vendor printout, yeah, not the actual window.
Catalog cut, a catalog cut about it, right?
Yeah, yeah. Like the vendor's spec.
Okay.
Because I'm sure you would have that, because you'd be ordering from those.
You want to see the bricks?
Yeah.
So, Mike?
Let's start with this.
Could you switch to the rendering or elevation? Yeah, one of those, so he can, if he's going to talk about bricks. Thanks.
So... So, so one of the concerns last time was about, about the bricks and about having some variety in the, in the plan, in the appearance of the plan. So, so there were, the intention is to have two colors of bricks, and this is one sample for the dark brick, and if you look carefully at the elevations, you'll also see that there are lines delineating the levels of the windows.
Here?
Yeah, and, and then up above, and crossways. Yeah, and, and then up above, and crossways.
Oops.
So those are the dark bricks. And then, and then the majority of it is, is red bricks. And this would be one sample of the red bricks.
Along with these, right, these little bands?
Right, along with those bands, right? And there, you can see, if you look carefully, you'll see the bands at the level of the, the heads of the windows. Here's another sample, so there's two samples. And so again, if you look at, if you look at those elevations, right across the lower level, where you have the darker bricks, you'd have the bronze tinted windows.
So would that just be the first floor that have?
Right, that was.
And is it the entire windows, like the whole?
Right, yeah, the whole piece of glass, right. Not, not, it's not, it's not something that's, this is in the glass. This is not something that you apply to the glass. This is the glass, it's a bronze tinted glass.
So will that be noticeable on the outside? Like, is it, like, will it be noticeable on the outside? When you look at the first floor, those windows are darker than the top?
Yes, exactly right.
Is that what you were thinking of, Maria, or?
Well, I'm, I'm not the architect, so I didn't want to design it. I just, my comment was just privacy for the first floor on the parking lot and street side. And then somehow breaking up the massing. The 3D model helps, you know, see the sort of changes. It's just, for that scale and massing, it was very monolithic. But, I mean, I, I suppose the bronze glass addresses the privacy. I worry it will kinda date itself, it's kind of a seventies look, maybe. So it would just be kinda dark on the first floor, and then the upper two would be sort of, I mean, windows typically do reflect black during the day anyways, when they, when it's light out, so.
At nighttime, they draw the blinds, they draw the drapes.
Right, right.
Everyone does.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, the 3D model helps sort of show there's more to the elevation than the flat elevations. I mean, I appreciate the effort to, to address that.
I just wanna make sure that it looks okay. I assume you wouldn't do it on the northern side of the building, the first floor?
Right, it really was on the parking lot side, and the streetscape here, as far as just people walking, like, literally six feet from the windows.
I agree, you wouldn't, you wouldn't put it on the northerly side, against the bank, that wouldn't make any sense.
Jan?
Last, weren't you also talking about using some shrubbery to do some screening too, for those things?
That doesn't appear on that one.
Yeah, so there's, there's trees, but is, I thought you were talking about putting some shrubs in front of those windows too, I can't remember.
We still have the planting strips, you know, on the street side and the backside, with plantings. I mean, we did mention possibility of increasing the density on the backside, because, you know, there were blank spaces, but, and we can still do that. But it was kinda left unresolved, if you will. So there is still a planting strip all along here, pretty much. And then here, you see plant, the planting strip here and here, but there, you know, there's, there's gaps in there. And we can add shrubs, greenery. I almost thought we talked about it maybe not being needed, if, if there was some type of glass treatment that could be done, so, yeah.
Because.
Well, I was, yeah, I was thinking like some type of mirrored effect, you know, where you can't see through or in from the outside.
And also, if you are changing some of the units to larger retail and larger other spaces on the first floor, you know, it's not as much of an issue either.
That's true.
If you're losing some units.
So if you could give that a little bit more thought, I'm unfamiliar with this bronzing. You know, I kinda know what it looks like on buildings, but I don't know how it would look on this. Yeah, well, different than just like a tinting or whatever. So if you could just explore that, I want you all to be happy with your building too, and how it looks. And we don't wanna over-design something.
We're already happy.
Well, we wanna make sure your first floor tenants are happy too. Chris?
So Mr. Brown gave us a catalog cut sheet, but it really has a lot of specification information. I wonder if he could come up with a picture of what this window looks like?
Yeah, that's.
That would be helpful to the board.
That's the request, we'll do that, we'll bring that next time, sure.
Just the main factor.
Thank you.
It's gotta happen, yeah.
Main factor, yeah, come soon. Philip?
Excellent, thank you.
It's on my list.
Just wanted to bring up something else from the last time, and part of this was the town, Chris. You know, affirm maintenance and repair of the public way kind of agreement. That, I feel, needs to be hammered out, since it is the outside, and everyone needs to be in agreement who's maintaining and repairing. Yeah?
Something that Jason Skeels brought up in his letter of review. And I think it would be a good idea if Mr. Lou and Mr. McChie went down and met with Jason and asked him, what exactly does he expect to see in that maintenance plan for the public way? And they could address that in a, in a written document. You know, there're gonna be benches there, there's gonna be paving, there's gonna be lights, there's gonna be landscape that has to be maintained, grass, lawn. So what, what does, what does the town DPW, who ordinarily maintains the town right of way, expect to see in a maintenance plan for this type of environment? And I think that they could give him a very good idea. They might even be able to give him a sample of something that someone else has done, or something that they have. And that would be, I would think, acceptable to you.
And there should be some set delineation between, like, the town will take care of the, the streetlights, I assume, you know? And, and the owner doesn't, in the public way I'm talking about.
So I don't know what arrangements Mr. McChie has made with the DPW. I haven't really been privy to that. There's been a lot of conversation about it, but there haven't been any specifics. So getting some specifics about who's taking care of the lights, who's taking care of the plants, who, who fixes the sidewalk when it gets cracked. All of those things, I think, need to be put in the maintenance plan.
Great, and it was Jason and who, did you mention?
Well, Jason Skeels and Guilford Mooreing are the ones who really need to buy into this, yep.
So that's, you'll make a meeting with them and get that? Because I think that's in everybody's best interest to spell out who's supposed to do what, so there's no confusion. Any other issues that the board has at Jack?
So, again, I think Janet's been bringing up the van pooling and car. And again, I would be happy just to understand how the public transit works, how does someone get from that location to downtown? How does that person get from that location to UMass? I, I don't, I don't know. But I, for me, that, that would satisfy that requirement for a waiver, for me.
And David, I don't know if this ever got addressed, the car charging? Or, did you bring that, no?
Yeah, I did, but I think that, that's, given other concerns, that's minimal.
Okay. Do you have any? So any other outstanding issues that we can give a heads up to look at? I think I have everything on my list. Okay, so, off again. Please utilize town staff, ask questions, have your meetings, keep an open mind. You're starting a village on the south end, so we want it to be great.
So we meet two weeks from now?
I would assume, do we have room on the?
You need to move to continue the meeting, and you've already got two public hearings scheduled for that night. One is the Amherst College Athletic Fields.
Okay.
And the other one is the continuation of the lights at the Bank of America. So we might wanna schedule this one, I don't know.
I would say after those.
Eight o'clock?
I don't think there'll be.
I don't know, 7:30, 8 o'clock? I, I don't know. I expect that the Amherst fields are gonna take a while, because I think neighbors are gonna show up.
Who's gonna show up?
Neighbors. Neighbors who are concerned about activity on that side of the road. They've already shown that they're concerned based on their interaction with us on 132 North Hampton Road, the proposal for the supportive housing. So I think they've gotten to be more aware of what's going on, and, and have been notified by Amherst College about this project, so.
Do we have any jurisdiction?
Yes, because it's not in the ED zoning district. I think it's in RN, so.
It's in the RN?
Yeah, so I think that's gonna be at 7:05. Then we have ATM at, whatever time that was continued to, then this.
Did we give them a time? Which, for both, for the Bank of America, we gave 7:15?
According to the plan.
7:15. Well, then I'd say put the Amherst College last.
Amherst College has already been advertised.
At what time?
It was advertised for 7:05. That was before we knew that we had other things going on that night.
Can we put this one in at 7:10?
So this one could go on a different night, if you wanna meet on a different night.
That's.
Which might be better, because then you'd have some energy to actually think about things.
So would we wanna start earlier that night and fit this in? Or would we wanna do a different night?
A different night.
Different night, okay. How are Mondays are, oh, go.
So Pam just reminded me that we have a presentation on the solar project on the landfill, also scheduled for the 16th. So it seems like the 16th is really full. So you could either choose to go the week after that and, and have a separate meeting, which would be, with 16 plus 7 is 23, right? So it could be October 23rd?
We could, or could we try another night earlier than that? I really hate to push, I mean, if, if they get a go, they're, they're rushing, they're trying to beat the snow, so. Yeah. So if we looked at the 16th, and so how is everybody's Monday or Tuesday the 14th or 15th? Does anyone have one of those nights they couldn't?
14th is Columbus Day.
Oh, so we don't do Columbus?
House not open on Columbus Day.
Okay, so 15th, who has a conflict on the 15th at 7?
I have CPAC meetings, sorry.
At what time?
7.
Could we do, this would take a long night, we could do a.
Thursday, the 17th?
It's Tuesday, I'm talking about Tuesday, the 15th.
Yep, yep, so now we're on Thursday, the 17th?
I can.
Okay. Does anyone have a conflict with Thursday, the 17th at 7? I think we could do that, would that work with you?
I appreciate that very much, I know it's extra time for you.
So we'll, good, so we'll do a meeting on Thursday, the 17th, at 7 o'clock, and we'll just keep it to this, this item. And if you could get that out on the website, is, you know, so if people are following this, they know it's a different night.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Yeah, I move for continuing.
Any public comment?
Yes, I haven't forgotten, it's on the list, but, so we're gonna, yeah, let's, we should, we'll do it now. So if one or all of you could move back, and then I'll ask for public comment. But one of you might wanna pop forward again, if it's something that you would all answer. Thank you. So please come up, sorry, it's after 10, so my brain is going. So please say who you are, we know who you are, but just tell those folks out there still watching.
Mark Kavanoff, I'm with Florence Bank. Just two questions, one, so the setback to the building on the north side, I know there, I believe six feet or six, whatever the dimension happened to be, is that from the upper floors or from the first floor? Is there any overhangs on the, as the building goes up?
Set it against what?
The setback on the north side of the building is six feet at the foundation. My question is, as you go.
It's, it's the overhang.
Yeah.
The way overhang, the way setback works in Amherst is.
No, I mean, you're particular.
Furthest extent of the building.
Okay.
So the furthest extent of the building is, is six feet from the property boundary.
You know what, come up and say, in case other people wanna know.
Yeah.
And address then where the building actually, like, how deep is that window? So he's wondering where the foundation is on that north.
How far back is the foundation, much greater than six feet apparently?
So, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I gotta sit here, sorry.
Push the button, and the green light should come on, and then you know you're.
Ah, match, thank you. So the foundation steps in and out. And, and where the foundation is, is back, the overhang is out a foot and a half from there. And from that foot and a half is six feet to the property boundary.
Okay.
And then, and then where the, where the, where the building steps out, the, the overhang is, is a gable, and so it's flush. So it's, it's the same, it's at the same 18 inches from, from the, and, and, and it's flush with, with the eave that goes all the way across.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
If you, could you put up the eleva, you know, the, or rendering, whatever that shows the bump of?
Yeah, that would make it a little bit clearer, I can, I can point to them.
Let's go back to.
No, not that one, go, go to that, yeah.
Does that show it, or?
I think that what, so, yeah.
Yeah, that sort of shows it.
So it looks like the, the windows where the gables are protruding.
Right, the, the windows are, are out flush with, with the gutters that are, are the eaves.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And the gables, the gables are back, at the top, at the back.
Got it, okay, thank you. And then the second question is, so, how many parking stalls are we shooting for at this point? Because when we started out, it was 61, the plan that was submitted, I guess, for tonight, was 61 apartments and 67 parking stalls. So now we're at, are we looking for a particular number of apartments at this point, that's potentially four or less?
Well, they've suggested that they're gonna look at removing four apartments.
Got it.
Not reducing the building size, so they wouldn't be able to squeeze more parking in. So it's 57 apartments for 67 spots.
I'd just like to throw out that it would be troublesome to try to squeeze in more parking, because we already have approved from Conservation Commission, for instance. So we'd have to open up that, here again, if there was, you know, further encroachment of the back of property, et cetera, things like that. So, you know, whatever, that would be another kind of.
You gotta speak if you're gonna go, yeah, no, you gotta talk into the. So basically, what you're saying is, you're at the 70%. To open it up for more parking, you have to go back and revisit wetlands issue and conservation, and, and at this point, it's probably.
And then, again, adding more paving would, would obviously require reducing some of the building. And so it would be another total redesign.
Right.
Okay.
Did you express your concern, or are you just, are you still concerned about parking?
Oh, absolutely still concerned about parking, you know, and I, and again, like I said before, nobody, I don't, nobody in the whole room here is opposed to the development, I agree. It, it seems like we're, you know, we've designed something that apparently isn't, doesn't necessarily fit the property, and now we're trying to just get it done before it snows for some reason. And I can appreciate, there's been a lot of effort, and it's been, I mean, I remember talking to Amir a year and a half ago about this. And I understand that it's an issue, but now we're at the goal line, and that, if, you know, a percent of the group here, it still seems to think, hey, I have an issue with the amount of parking. And because the plan's already been drawn, I guess you could've drawn a third floor, had 84 apartments, and, you know, just because the plan is drawn, I don't know if that's a good reason not to necessarily think about making it accurate, you know, something that'll fit the property. But that's just, that's just an opinion, I mean, the board can decide whatever they think's appropriate.
Thank you.
That's my, that's my concern. Thanks.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment about this project tonight? Please come forward.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment about whether.
Please say who you are, so we know who you are.
Okay, I'm Dorothy Pam, 229 Amity Street. And he said that the apartment has everything. And he said that the apartment has everything. I did wonder about a few things that I didn't see, which might be remediable, okay? I didn't see any affordable units, I didn't see any handicapped accessible apartments, and I didn't see any energy saving except for saying people won't have cars, can't have cars. And I didn't see any community, which is something I raised way long ago. Now, there has been some movement towards that tonight, with the possibility of a gym, because otherwise it just seemed like a very lonely building, that almost no place to gather in any way of the tenants, and, except in front of the building on a sidewalk, which is not where people gather generally. And no way for them to meet, intermingle, no, no barbecue pits or any of those social things, no benches to sit on outside. So I, I think that, working at least towards some of those things, because I do think that apartment buildings should be meeting the needs of the people who live in the apartment buildings. That's my comment.
Thank you. So if one or two or three of you want to address the affordable housing or lack thereof, the handicap, I know, I saw on the latest, Mike, again, if you could pull up the, the first floor, I think there was handicap units?
I believe there was three.
Three, yeah. Address that. Energy savings, I also assume you're using, like, low energy lights and stuff, maybe you're doing other things. And the lobby, you haven't really, there are two lobbies, but maybe if you detail, are there couches?
Yeah.
Are there, what's in there?
Anyway, so you can see the symbols here, there's three, one, two, three currently shown, handicap accessible units, and then, you want to talk about the lobbies or anything?
I don't know if you're, yeah, speak into the mic, sorry.
I'm sorry. It's hard to operate two things at once for me, for, tonight, for some reason. So, yeah, the handicap units, again, are here, one, two, three, on the first floor. There's, this is the rear entry, this is the front entry, which steps right into a lobby, or, or I should say, both of them step right into lobby spaces. Do you want to talk about other?
Well, there's also, in the, in the rear lobby is where you collect your mail, and you can point out the mailboxes. People often congregate by mailboxes. If we do a gym, that'll be a congregating space in the backyard.
Yeah, if we go back to the, you want to go to the site plan?
Yeah.
So in the lobbies, is there furniture, is there, or no furniture?
We, we haven't designed furniture yet, no. That's, that's, that's down the line. We're trying to get a foundation in right now. Go, go to the.
I think it could be.
Well, I think just trying to address what people are saying, the whole package of an apartment building, you know, are you creating?
There will be, there will be furniture, yeah.
Yeah, if there's no furniture, that's a different feeling in a lobby than if there is some furniture.
Yeah, no, the, the, the attendants certainly have furniture.
We're not asking for the exact couches or anything, we're just asking what were your plans for the lobby?
So, again, we always envisioned this front plaza as, as being, you know, available, and I know people have different opinions about whether people will sit and gather or meet at, at the front of the building on the street. I think they will, I would, if there's seating offered, and we've put bench, permanent benches on the plaza, as well as a litter receptacle. This area, we added a, because of this kind of more widened plaza arrival area, if you will, there is a bench, although you can't see it, it's kind of under this tree. We do have a bench, there we only put one, we moved the bike racks here up against the building that used to be in this area. We could put a, you know, two benches there, if, if you think that would improve the situation. It's kind of more of a pickup zone, if you will.
Yeah.
But I don't see why, you know, people might not sit and gather and talk there, you know, for short periods or whatever. We've, we talked about this area, this kind of lawn area in the back has been enlarged somewhat, but there is a, there is a wetland, you know, the no build, no touch zone, which extends pretty close to, you know, that back line there. So this is a, a space, and, I mean, there's no permanent grill or barbecue or anything like that being offered. It's one of those things where, you know, people might bring out their own lawn chair or, you know, Adirondack chairs or whatever, I don't know, maybe Mr. McChie would be, you know, willing to put some outdoor furniture as part of the, you know, package here. We did add a couple flowering trees in this area to enhance it. I don't really know if that was necessary, because you've got the woods right there, but nevertheless, we did add, you know, add some trees that would, some cherry trees that would add color in the back, as, as well as provide maybe some shade for those who, you know, would like to prefer to sit, you know, in the shaded areas. And, and we do realize this is, it's a tight site, and obviously, this, the building occupies a good portion of the site, the parking has to occupy a certain portion. The proposal does still fit, you know, we're at that 70 percent maximum coverage, so, you know, we, we are complying with that. Other, you know, portions of the site where you might see, for instance, back here, where this is green, this is kind of like, is going to be left as a, a natural area to naturally revegetate, because it, it is within wetland no build zones. They're not shown, but there's a wetland, you know, over here, and then a, another portion of wetlands down over here, and they probably join up somehow, but, you know, that's further into the Amherst College land, but they're overlapping no disturb zones, actually, if I flip to the site plan. Sorry about all this jumping around. You can see these arcs right here. Again, well, this, if I go from the wetlands out, this is the 25-foot no parking, or no driveway and parking zone, this is the 30-foot no disturb zone here and here, and then on the inside, you know, this is that fif, or no, right there, sorry, this is that 50-foot building setback. So, you know, originally, when, you know, we tried to look at maximizing the building, this building pretty much had equal, equal length legs, if you will, and, you know, obviously we had to adjust the building at some point to comply with the no building setback in the, for the wetlands. So, yeah, I mean, given that it's a tight site, I think that the significant improvements in the front, you know, green space, I, I think it's still a, an opportunity for people to be able to sit on the grass, and it's not like you're sitting at the, you know, next to a highway or something like that.
Okay, so just the last two of that, her question, why, and I know you've addressed this before, but there's no affordable units, and the other one is just any energy savings, you're using lights, whatever.
It wasn't required.
Like the washer, are your appliances going to be, you know?
We have.
I'll address that part.
Go ahead.
So, so we have an energy consultant on the project, and, and we have requirements, Amherst has a, a stretch energy code, and we have to comply with that. We have walls with insulation in the, in the stud wall, and also rigid insulation outside the stud wall behind the bricks. We have heavy insulation R49 in the attic space. We have insulation in the foundation. We have Energy Star appliances. We have windows that exceed the code, the code is R3.3, these windows are at least R4, and in some places R5. So I, I think we, and, oh, and then as far as, there is no, there is no normal boiler or steam boiler heating system in the building, instead we have mini splits, and, and mini splits are very efficient for heating and air conditioning as well. And, and those are hidden on the roof behind the fence. So I think as far as energy saving, it's, it's probably top shelf, I don't think there's going to be many better buildings in Amherst at this point or anywhere, until you get to a zero energy building, which is, is not quite yet.
Okay, thank you. And the affordable.
It wasn't required.
Thank you. Any other public comment or questions? Okay, so I think we can take a motion now to continue this to the 17th at 7.
I move to continue the public hearing to August, sorry, to October 17th.
17th at 7.
At, at 7 o'clock.
It's a Thursday. A second?
Second.
Second. And, yes? Mike, do you have a que, any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, unanimous, so we'll see you then.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for making the accommodations.
So, agenda, what do we have to do, Chris?
The only thing you really need to do is two things, you need to sign the decisions which were based on the minutes that we amended earlier this evening.
At 7A for Main, for 62 Main Street?
Yeah, I've got the wrong agenda here, excuse me.
Yeah.
6A, 462 Main Street. So I'm going to send those decisions around, and if you could all sign them.
Okay, and there was something else we had to do, or is that it?
The thing is in A and R, and if we don't do that, my head will roll tomorrow morning, so.
Okay, so you're going to pass the Main Street down for us to sign, and then you're covering around the A and R.
Yep, there are two Main Street decisions, one is a special permit, and one is a site plan review. The special permit didn't contain the findings in 11.24, so you don't have to worry about that, and it didn't have any conditions. So it's only the site plan review that needs to be changed based on the amendments that you made to the minutes. So I'm going to pass those around.
Okay.
Ms. Gray-Mullen needs to sign in two places on each decision. So now I'm going to talk to you about the property that the town of Amherst is purchasing along with the Kestrel Trust up in North Amherst. It's called the Zala property, and it's on the west side of Sunderland Road, or west side of 116, excuse me, as you go towards the Sunderland Line. It's a large piece of property that extends from Amherst into Hadley, and the property lines aren't being changed, but the attorney for one of the sides, I'm not sure which one, required that there be a new A and R plan delineating this property and showing the property all the way into Hadley. So the Hadley Planning Board has signed this plan, all the members of them signed the plan. We only require that one, our chair, sign our plan, but I will bring the plan around and show it to you.
Oh, really? So you don't have to sign it on the A and R? Interesting. Oh, God.
Oh, you could. You could find it and try.
A lot of solid waste.
Oh, it's your main, oh, check to your school. Wait, two pages. Okay, so here it is. Here's Sunderland Road. This is a piece of land that was parked out for a house, a little boy, and this property goes anywhere that, it goes across this, using this here, and all the way back here, so that it's long, way back into Hadley.
Wow.
So the town owners is purchasing this property, it's a trust, and we're very happy about it, and they need to have the closing by October 10th, and that's why this is kind of being rushed to you. I hope they can agree to authorize this agreement to some.
Is the town purchasing the set, the parts, the property that, in Hadley?
No.
Just the, just the property in Amherst?
How much?
That's a good question. I'll have to research that.
Chris, what's the address?
Pardon?
The address?
What is the address of that? I don't. Um, okay. I almost had a direct, it's in front of the GIs, I hear.
Oh, on the paper there, sorry.
Do you need a pen?
What do you, what do you go with?
Wow.
Will you put it on?
Um, it looks pretty straightforward.
That's a good piece of land the town purchased on 1D1, yeah, just.
Here that little crustacean.
It's very important.
Yes.
Important conservation, okay.
Yeah.
It connects to that.
There it is. So, this field, it actually includes a piece of land to seed one, which is just north of it. For some reason, our GIS shows it as two parcels, but the survey doesn't show it as two parcels. But anyway, it goes all the way from Sunderland Road into Hadley, into that black, blue line.
That part, too.
I have to stay, because I worked on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
For the rest of you, would authorize this, Gray-Mullen, to sign this?
Yes.
Y'all good with it?
Okay, good.
So if everything else can wait, Chris, the only thing I'll ask about is report of staff. Is there anything else you needed to tell us before we run away?
I would like to thank you for coming up with this agenda tonight. I look forward to another, agenda on the 16th of October.
We're meeting on 16th and 17th, two days.
Yes.
Okay.
On the 16th, we have the solar project on the landfill, which is just a presentation to me for recommendations, and you have the ATM lighting coming out, and you have the Amherst College.
The 13th, yep.
This is just you, Chris.
Solar, uh, no, one of the pages is everybody, if you dig, I know, it's, there are two signy things on that one page, so I'll also take a motion to end now, if anyone wants to do that. We're multitasking here.
I move to adjourn.
And second?
Second. What did I say?
Yeah, all in favor of ending? Good, yep, unanimous.